I'd like to call the meeting into order. I would like to ask one of our students, Eduardo from Muscley Elementary School, to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right there, well, that's a microphone right there.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where Richard stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on a second, hold on, because Eduardo had a friend come down with him. What's your name?
Daniel.
Say it in the microphone.
Can you help me again? My name is Daniel.
And what school do you attend, Daniel?
Muscley.
Well, thank you both.
My name is Eduardo.
All right, Eduardo. You guys did a great job. 1.3, approval of the agenda. Some move.
Second.
Move to second, vote please. Ms. Elzatma?
Aye.
Ms. Preciado?
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed. That brings us to Section 2, Special Presentations and Recognitions. 2.1, League of Educators 2024 Educator of the Year recognition. The Board of Education honors Dan Jimenez, San Andreas High School's school teacher, as the 2024 Educator of the Year, Region 10 High School. Dan received this prestigious award at the California League of Educators Annual Conference in Monterey, California on March 8, 2024. I wish he had told me, I would have attended. I love Monterey. The CLE's Educator of the Year Award is given annually to California elementary, middle, and high school educators who exemplify educational excellence. Congratulations, Mr. Jimenez. Let's go down and give it.
Congratulations once again to Mr. Dan Jimenez on such an incredible accomplishment. Good evening. I'm Communications Manager Maria Garcia, and I will emcee the Community Partner Awards segment of tonight's recognition program. Tonight's Community Partner Award recipient will receive a special plaque made by our very own Bing Wong Elementary students. San Bernardino City Unified is very fortunate to have partners who step up to respond to the needs of our students with their community resources. This month's Outstanding Community Partner Award recipient is the Making Hope Happen Foundation. The Making Hope Happen Foundation stands as a beacon of compassion and empowerment in the heart of our community, dedicated to transforming lives and fostering hope where it is needed the most. This remarkable organization has been selected to receive this month's Outstanding Community Partner Award in recognition of its unwavering commitment to serving the most vulnerable members of our community, and that's our children. Please put your hands together and help me welcome Making Hope Happen Foundation CEO, Nikki Detman. She will accept this award and provide brief remarks.
Well, thank you so much. This is such an honor. As I've mentioned many times before, Making Hope Happen Foundation is just really a reflection of San Bernardino, of all the great things in the city and all the great things within this district. I am proud to be a San Marino native, and I'm also proud to be a product of San Marino City Unified School District. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I was here in the boardroom when Mauricio gave the great presentation about SBCUSD shines, and it really resonated with us at the foundation. A lot of the things that you had talked about are also what we're about. A lot of our mission statement, a lot of the same messaging, and so it was just really spot on. And so to be here two weeks later, to receive this award, is really touching and really important to us. I wanted to mention that I do have a couple of our board members here today, Kathy Knowles and Jennifer Carter. Also on my staff, Erin Brinker, who is our Vice President of Development. We really appreciate the powerful and collaborative partnership we have with the district and look forward to it continuing for many years to come.
Thank you once again to our partners, the Making Hope Happen Foundation. My name is Carla Cross, and I am serving as the Internal Communications Manager, and I will be presenting the outstanding awards and handling this segment of tonight's board meeting. The Outstanding Awards Program stems from the board's desire and their commitment to recognize our students who are deserving in the areas of academics, athletics, fine arts, and citizenship. It is also an opportunity to recognize those parents, volunteers, and employees who have gone above and beyond in support of their respective schools. All of our school-level honorees will receive a certificate of appreciation from our Board of Education and a certificate from San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. Student and Parents Award winners will receive free tickets for their family to attend the San Bernardino Symphony, and our student honorees will also receive a district bumper sticker and yard sign. Audience, these presentations will take no more than 15 to 20 minutes in total. So with that, I ask that out of respect for your fellow honorees, that once your name is called and you receive your certificate, that you would please return to your seats. That way, you're there to support and cheer on those that went ahead of you and lend your support to them as well. So with that agreement in mind, we're getting ready to call our first group of honorees. So please, once your name is called, I'm going to ask you to step forward, come forward down the ramp where you're positioning yourselves now. You'll be greeted by our Executive Cabinet members, by our Superintendent, Mr. Mauricio Ariano, by our President of the Board of Education, as well as our other outstanding members here, esteemed members. I'm going to ask that as you're shaking hands, would you please find your place? There's a center gold-plated circle area right here in the center of the floor. You can't miss it. And that's where our Gold Star honorees tonight will be positioned for their photo. So please be on the lookout for that. When you're done, as a reminder, you'll be exiting using this walkway here to my right and returning to your seats. So if we're ready, let's begin with our first group of honorees, all the way from Mount Vernon Elementary School. And up first, I'd like to invite Principal Silvet Del Yano to join us at the front. Thank you, Principal. And audience, I hope you're ready to keep that energy going and clap and cheer for one of our favorite SBCUSD 4th graders, Mr. Gabriel Rios. Gabriel was nominated by his teacher, Stacy Black. Gabriel is a student who shines as a beacon of academic excellence and outstanding citizenship. Beyond consistently achieving stellar grades, Gabriel is also kind, he is helpful, and he's a student who follows the rules. Gabriel, we are all so proud of you. Congratulations and keep up the good work. And audience, let's keep that applause going. We have one of our favorite 6th graders, Delilah Reyes Cheaman. Delilah is a student and teacher Mike Ruffalo's class. Delilah stands out for her exceptional academic achievements and citizenship. She demonstrates commitment to her studies, and she earns praise for her outstanding grades. Delilah is also kind and helpful in nature. Way to go, Delilah. We are all so proud of you. Congratulations. Our first Outstanding Parent Award winner tonight is Ruby Barrios Vallejo, excuse me. Ruby is a dedicated and proud mother of two children. She plays a pivotal role in her children's academic journey while maintaining strong involvement as a parent committed to the betterment of the Mount Vernon Elementary School community. Ruby, we thank you so very much for your support. Congratulations on your award tonight. And for a point of clarification, Ruby is a proud mother of four children. Just wanted to make sure we got that corrected. Thank you, Ruby. Next, let's invite Attendance Verifier Viviana Inceso to come forward. Viviana epitomizes excellence in her role as an attendance verifier and as an out-of-class secretary. Her exceptional work performance is characterized by her tireless work ethic and remarkable attention to detail. Thank you, Viviana. We appreciate you for all that you do. Audience, please put your hands together for 5th grade teacher Donna Cosman. Donna, please come forward. Thank you so much. Donna was selected tonight because she is one of our district staff who constantly embodies the spirit of service and leadership. She fosters a dynamic learning environment where students can explore their interests and develop critical skills. Her tireless efforts and commitment exemplifies her outstanding professionalism and dedication to excellence. Mrs. Cosman, thank you so very much for your leadership and your service to the Mount Vernon School community. Now, if everyone is ready, we're going to be introducing our principal, Dr. Dana Jamison, from Muscley Elementary, as we begin the recognitions for this campus. We met him earlier, but we need to introduce him one more time. Please put your hands together as loud as you can for Eduardo Sandoval Soto. Eduardo is an outstanding student in Cecilia McKinney's 3rd grade class. Eduardo is hardworking and dedicated to his academics. He is kind, he is friendly, and he has a loving heart. He loves to make people smile and laugh. And Eduardo loves school so much that his career goal is to become a teacher himself one day. Eduardo, we're all so very proud of you. Congratulations and keep up the good work. Another young man we met earlier who needs another introduction, so let's get ready to welcome dual immersion 4th grader Daniel Vasquez. Daniel is an outstanding student in Angelica Alvarez's class, and he is being honored tonight for academic excellence and citizenship. Daniel is a shining example of a student who has grit and constantly strives for improvement. Daniel is kind, and he goes out of his way to make others feel welcome. Daniel, we are so very proud of you. Thank you so very much for being with us tonight. Way to go. Keep up the good work. Congratulations. Wait, wait, everyone, because our outstanding grandparent is already with us. But let's introduce her properly. Tonight's outstanding grandparent from this campus, from Muscley Elementary, is Latitia Mariata. So her grandson is David, who was just, I'm sorry, Daniel, who was just recognized. And Latitia invests many of her hours to support Muscley Elementary by attending meetings and family events, and she still offers to do more. Thank you so very much, Latitia, for displaying your unwavering dedication to the education and well-being of Muscley students. Our next honoree from Muscley is bilingual office assistant, health aide Karen Cordova. Karen, please make your way forward. Karen excels at providing excellent health services to students, and she engages families so students can thrive. Just this school year, Karen has set up more than 400 Hazel Health telemedicine visits so Muscley students receive the medical care they need and deserve. Thank you so very much, Karen, for your service to Muscley Elementary School. Our final Muscley honoree is 5th grade teacher Laura Cortez Cuevas. As Muscley's English language facilitator, Laura has assisted in the reclassification of over 34 students as English proficient. She has helped to increase 5th grade academic scores by analyzing student data and planning with her team on how exactly to increase student achievement on her campus. Thank you so very much. We appreciate all that you do, Laura, for the students at Muscley Elementary. It is now my pleasure to welcome Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Middle School Principal Ernesto Cañez. Audience, please help me welcome Mr. Christopher Martinez, 7th grader at King Middle School. Christopher is being recognized for academics and citizenship. He is a true representation of a king scholar, showing exceptional character both inside and outside of the classroom. He is currently the ASB president, where he serves and leads the entire King Middle School student body. Way to go, Christopher. We are so proud of you. Congratulations, sir. Next up is 8th grader Brittany Melchior. Brittany is an outstanding scholar who excels in academics, citizenship, and art. She is respectful, responsible, and helps to provide a safe learning environment at her campus, all while maintaining a 4.0 GPA. This accomplishment earned Brittany recognition at the King Middle School Academic Award Celebration in February. Congratulations, Brittany. We're also proud of you. Let's welcome Lydia Yuritia, King's Outstanding Parent Award winner tonight. Lydia has been a positive partner with King Middle School. School staff appreciate her communication with administration and parents via the school side council. Lydia can always be depended upon to provide input to support the success of King Middle School and its scholars. Thank you so very much, Lydia. We appreciate all you do on behalf of this school community. King's Outstanding Classified Employee is Custodian 1, Mr. Sam Arnivar. Mr. Arnivar consistently demonstrates pride in his work. Sam's enthusiasm and his passion for upholding King's values and fostering a positive learning environment serve as an inspiration to those all around him. Sam, we appreciate everything you do on behalf of the scholars, students, staff, families of King Middle School. Thank you so very much, sir. History and Social Science teacher Robert Almanza goes above and beyond for his students at King Middle School. Every Monday, he prepares and produces student-created video content to support open communication and information that is vital to both students and staff. Robert's leadership, including serving as department chair, exemplifies his commitment to students and staff. Thank you so very much, Robert, for everything that you do on behalf of the students and staff at King Middle School. We appreciate you so much. We are nearing the end of tonight's program, and our final Outstanding Achievement Award school is San Andreas High School. Please put your hands together as we introduce Principal Dory Stratton. Now, audience, if you're ready, let's put our hands together and cheer as loudly as you can for San Andreas Senior, Alasia Nash. Alasia was nominated for this award by the Career Technical Education Department. Alasia is involved in everything at her campus, from student leadership, accountability council, to dual enrollment in college, and several additional extracurricular activities. Alasia plans to be a social worker because she just simply loves helping people. Way to go, Alasia. Congratulations. Congratulations. David Renteria is our next honoree tonight. He is also a senior in the class of 2024. David was nominated by teacher Robert Figueroa. David is an outstanding scholar who excels in academics and citizenship, and he is also a standout student in the Health Pathway Program. David is a quiet leader, always ready to lend a helping hand, and he actively engages in extracurricular activities and leadership roles. Congratulations, David. We're so proud of you. And to both of our seniors tonight, go David and go Shay. Our Parent Award winner tonight is Amber Plone. Amber is a stellar parent. She has two children attending Cajon High School and one at San Andreas High School. Amber is active in the school side council, and she is always ready to help as needed, even bringing in lunch treats. Amber San Andreas surely appreciates you. Thank you for everything you do. Next, let's welcome bilingual attendance technician Christina Tobete Velazquez. Christina is tonight's San Andreas Outstanding Classified Employee Award honoree. Christina is very resourceful, and she's a problem solver. She helps ensure that students are in class daily and that she connects families to important resources within our community. Christina, you certainly are outstanding. We appreciate you. Congratulations. It's time to announce our final Outstanding Achievement Award honoree for this evening. Please help me welcome Outstanding Certificated Employee, Rowan Fakori. Rowan's tireless efforts have resulted in a rich and positive school culture, where inclusivity and respect are paramount. She has transformed countless lives and empowered students to reach their full potential. Thank you, Rowan. We appreciate you so much. Thank you, members of the board, superintendent, and cabinet. Would you please return to your seats? And, audience, let's give all of tonight's outstanding award honorees one more round of applause. Thank you to our audience members. I want to appreciate you for showing your support to your fellow honorees. We want to send a special thank you to 5th District's San Bernardino County Supervisor, Mr. Joe Baca Jr., and the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra for supporting this evening's honorees. If you haven't already done so, please remember to pick up your yard sign from one of my team members in the rear of the room before you leave. This concludes this evening's special presentations, and at this time, I'd like to turn the floor back over to Board President, Mr. Danny Tillman. Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody, and thank you, Ms. Carter Cross did a good job with the announcing. And that brings us to 2.3. Recognition of May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I'd like to ask Dr. White to read that for us. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just read it loud. Whereas in 1978, President Jimmy Carter signed into law the Asian Pacific American Heritage Week to be celebrated during the first 10 days of May. And whereas in 1992, Congress passed a law designating the entire month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas Congress recently designated May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which encompasses all people who can trace their heritage for the Asian continent, the Hawaiian Islands, and the Pacific Islands. And whereas May is a time to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions made by generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders to government, industry, and commerce, agriculture, science, literature, and the arts. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education, Assembly of the City Unified School District, designates May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and joins with all Americans in celebrating the rich and diverse culture of these varied people, and that appropriate lessons about their contributions take place in our schools, not only during this month, but throughout the school year. So move.
Second.
The move to second. Vote, please. Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion passed. 2.4, Recognition of May as Labor History Month. Like to ask Mr. Husky to read that for us.
Thank you. Whereas May is Labor History Month, as first proclaimed by President Bill Clinton in 1995 and signed into law by California Governor Jerry Brown in 2012. And whereas labor history reveals the vital role of labor unions in the establishment of the eight-hour workday, the 40-hour workweek, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation, old age pensions, protection for the sick, equal employment opportunity, and prohibition of child labor, as well as legislation banning discrimination in employment. And whereas labor history shows that American workers were in the forefront of the effort to make free public education available to all children regardless of geography or social and economic status. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District, through its linked learning pathways and other efforts, is strengthening the labor force and economic vitality of the cities of San Bernardino and Highland by ensuring that students graduate prepared to succeed in college and careers. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby declares May 2024 to be Labor History Month and encourages schools to commemorate this month with appropriate educational exercises that make students aware of the role the labor movement has played in shaping California and the United States. So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Husky and second by Ms. Sabios. Call for the vote. Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Aye.
Item passed. Item 2.5, Recognition of May as Williams Syndrome Month. Like to ask I'd like to ask Ms. Grande to read that for us.
I am particularly honored to do so as I did have a student or two, and I just, to know them is to love them. Whereas, May is Williams Syndrome Awareness Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about the rare genetic condition that affects an estimated 30,000 people in the United States. And whereas Williams Syndrome is often characterized by a host of lifelong medical and developmental challenges. And whereas every person diagnosed with Williams Syndrome is unique, but these individuals also often have highly social personalities, striking verbal skills, and an affinity for music. And whereas, on April 10, 2017, North Park Elementary student Jonathan Martinez, who was born with Williams Syndrome, tragically died in a senseless act of violence. Whereas, the Williams Syndrome Association has been working since 1982 to increase international awareness and bring valuable resources to families touched by the condition. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims May 2024 as Williams Syndrome Awareness Month and takes this opportunity to honor the memory of Jonathan Martinez and remember him as a happy child who was social, friendly, and endearing.
So moved. Second.
Goodbye, Ms. Husky, and second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion was passed. 2.5, Recognition of School Nutrition Employee Week. Like to ask Mrs. Alexander to read that for us, please.
Thank you, President Tillman.
Thank you, President Tillman. Whereas, April 29th through May 3rd, 2024 is School Nutrition Employee Week, and May 3rd, 2024 is School Lunch Hero Day. And whereas nutritious meals at schools are an essential part of every student's school day. And whereas the staff of the Nutrition Services Department is committed to providing healthy, nutritious meals to the district's children. And whereas the individuals who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas school nutrition employees are the unsung heroes of education who make sure students have full stomachs and have the fuel they need to concentrate on learning during the school day. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District declares April 29th through May 3rd, 2024, a School Nutrition Employee Week and expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commands them on their dedication to the children of our community.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms... Ms. Medina and second by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Ms. Elzatma?
Aye.
Ms. Preciado?
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. 2.7, resolution of recognition of California Student Mental Health Week. Like to ask Ms. Sabios to read that for us.
Thank you, President Tillman. Whereas, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and May 6th through May 10th, 2024 is California Student Mental Health Week. And whereas, the early identification, intervention, and treatment of mental health and behavioral issues is important for a healthy student body and school community. And whereas, researchers have found... Researchers have found the rate of mental health disorders in children and youth have steadily increased over the past two decades. And whereas, students' mental health often goes unnoticed, and research has shown that adverse childhood experiences have lasting harmful impacts if not addressed. And whereas, reducing the stigma surrounding mental health will empower students to speak up when they need help. And whereas, schools, through their unique role in serving children and youth, have an opportunity to address student health early and effectively. And the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for students is a critical part of an overall education plan. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims the week of May 6th through 10th, 2024 as California Student Mental Health Week and acknowledges the importance of student mental health and recognizes year-round attention is paramount to the health and success of students. So moved.
It was moved by Ms. Sabios and second by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Ms. Elzatma?
Aye.
Ms. Preciado?
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Section 3, public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, and fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on a topic, on one topic, will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public comment is from Ms. Brenda Freshwater.
Evening, school board members, Mr. Ariano and Cabinet. I'm here today to express gratitude and admiration for your support of the second annual SBCUSD Pride Event last Saturday at Indian Springs High School. My name is Brenda Freshwater. I'm a program specialist in the Student Wellness and Support Services Department. I see that some of you are wearing our T-shirts, right? Many Faces of Community. I brought more in case you weren't able to get one. I want you to know that the theme of the event and the artwork for the T-shirts was designed by our students. Your commitment to inclusivity and diversity is evident by the number of you that attended the event. It takes all of us working together to reach our goal of safe welcoming and nurturing learning environments for all students. The support you provide sends a powerful message of acceptance and respect to our entire district community and creates a platform where individuals of all gender identities, sexual orientations, and their allies can come together in celebration of unique identities free from judgment or discrimination. As we reflect on the success of this event, we are reminded of the profound impact that can be achieved when we come together with a shared vision of equality and inclusion. During his remarks on Saturday, Mr. Ariano spoke about how much work it takes to host an event like Pride. And I'd like to take a moment here tonight to highlight some of the people and departments that worked so hard to make Saturday's event a success. I want to thank Nutrition Services for making sure everyone was hydrated. To the Communications Department for support with the branding and advertising. A shout out to Bill Campi for creating the artwork that honored the students' vision. And to Maria Garcia for all those live, in real-time updates. That was amazing. To Printing Services for being flexible and working with us on our unusual timelines. To Gina Perez in Family Engagement for safely transporting students on the discussion panel to the event. To school GSA leaders who gave their time and expertise to plan an amazing event. With a special shout out to Brianna Kick, who brings a unique set of skills that we could not do without. To Indian Springs High School and Principal Bykandova for hosting the event and also for putting up with our need to measure the quad again and again and again. To the Safety and Emergency Management Office for helping us to create a plan to keep everyone safe and providing first aid services. To Toby Bushy and the team at Maintenance and Operations for moving all of the puzzle pieces to make sure all events scheduled on Saturday had a place that met their needs and for making sure there was a Plan B should the weather prove raining. I really can't say enough about the team at MNO. They arrived before 7:00 a.m. to build over 30 booths for our community partners, and they were helpful and just seemed to anticipate our needs. Whenever we needed something, we just turned around, they were standing there with a smile, ready to help. To all the SBCUSD departments who hosted a booth at the event. We had Family Engagement, Accountability and Educational Technology, Special Education, School Nurses, and the STEAM Department. To the Student Wellness and Support Services Director, Colleen Williams, who helped us plan and establish our vision and then allowed us the space to work while removing all the barriers that came up along the way. To the Swiss team for diving in to help make the day run smoothly. And we all know that nothing would get done if it wasn't for a good secretary, and that is really true in this case. So many thanks to our Secretary Myra Hoya for helping us to navigate all of the district systems. And thank you once again for your continued support, and may we continue to work together toward a future where every individual is valued and respected regardless of who they are or who they love. We'll see you next year.
Thank you, Ms. Freshwater. It was a wonderful event. Thank you for all your hard work. Next, we have Hector Magallanes.
Good evening, President Tillman, Vice President Sabios, Superintendent Ariano, esteemed board members, and cabinet. My name is Hector Magallanes. I proudly serve as a special education teacher at San Andreas High School, and I lead the farm-to-school program as part of the Business and Technology Pathway at San Andreas High School. I have the privilege of being part of a student-run business that teaches diverse vocational and community skills to our students within the framework of a hydroponics lab and greenhouse. Within this initiative, our students with and without disabilities get to participate and engage in entrepreneurship activities such as product marketing, product creation, and daily operational activities. These experiences provide them with invaluable vocational and community skills. During the school year, we have had 184 district classrooms, 96 district-wide teachers, and 3,944 students from 33 different elementary, middle, and high schools participate in our farm-to-school events. We've successfully collaborated with prominent local businesses such as Escape Restaurant, The Moo, and most recently, our district's Nutrition Services Department, where we supply lettuces for the Friday Burger Bars at six of our high schools. This venture has seen a remarkable success over the past four years, and thanks to our crucial partnership with Niteal Bay. To give you a closer look at the difference your support is making, I would like to take this opportunity to invite you to our location and warmly invite each and every one of you to visit and experience our CTE pathway firsthand. Please consider this an open invitation to shadow our field trips or come to an event that we're going to host on May 10th. This event is going to host transition, adult transition students, those who have disabilities. Your support and presence would undoubtedly uplift our students and staff. Flyers of our remaining events will be distributed to you all. Thank you for your time and continued support. We hope to see you at San Andreas High School soon. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbara Pastech Cox?
Good evening, President Tillman, Vice President Sabios, Mr. Ariano, and esteemed members of the Cabinet and Board. My name is Barbara Pastech Cox, and it is my honor to represent the San Bernardino Teachers Association as its vice president. Tonight, I stand before you not only in my official capacity, but also as a voice for the 3,000 dedicated members of our association. As we embark on another demanding testing season, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to our teachers for their steadfast commitment and tireless efforts. Their hard work coupled with the essential support of our parents, administrators, and support staff is fundamental and steering us through these challenging times. This unified dedication ensures us that we continue to honor and fulfill our commitment to educational excellence. Together, we are not just meeting expectations, but we are setting new benchmarks for success in our community. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Luisa Curtis?
Good evening, everyone. Firstly, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, members of the Board of Education. My name is Luisa Curtis. I have taught as a school district teacher for 20-plus years. I have been working closely with the district, including Dr. Funchess and Dr. Ariano, to correct the impact of a district error that unjustly resulted in my removal from my teaching service for 18 months. The district has made some effort to correct the error. However, the impact of this forced a wrongful denial of employment, which cost me tens of thousands of dollars in loss of income and tremendous stress for me and my family. The reason for me being here this evening is to appeal to you, the members of the Board of Education, to request for a closed session so that you will know and understand how I was affected by the wrongful denial of employment and ask that you members direct the administration to improve their efforts to make me whole. I appreciate your time and I await your response. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Joe Navarro?
Hello, board members, superintendent, and cabinet. I appreciate you and thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Joe Navarro, proud father of two, a business owner here in San Bernardino, also a school board member and board president over Hooper Valley. But I guess my claim to fame is being Gil Navarro's son. It is with heavy hearts, if you haven't heard already, that my dad passed away Saturday on April 6th, last weekend, but he was surrounded by his friends and families, and he went out peacefully. Gil was a guiding light, a source of wisdom, and inspiration to all that knew him. His passion for education was infectious, and his dedication to helping others achieve his goal knew no bounds. Gil's unwavering dedication to uplifting those without a voice was not just a mission, but way of life. His impact on countless lives, including mine, is immeasurable. School districts were scared of him, and he was a force to be reckoned with, a true pillar of the community. His dedication to guiding and supporting students speaks volumes of the kind of person that he is and was. The legacy that he leaves behind in the hearts and minds of those he mentored is a testament to his compassion, his wisdom, and his generosity. May his memory continue to inspire and his teachings live on through the lives that he has touched. They say that when someone passes, you now have an angel you can call by name. I call mine Dad. His funeral will be held on Wednesday, April 24th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Packing House Church in Redlands, and his burial service will be at 2:00 p.m. at the Riverside National Cemetery in Riverside, where he will be given honors and for his military service. If anybody has any questions or concerns or any, like to know more about it, my email is joeforvoting@yahoo.com. That's joe, the number four, voting@yahoo.com. Though my dad has helped students throughout the state and even out of the state, his true passion was here in San Bernardino. He loved San Bernardino. San Bernardino was his heart. This is where he loved and he wanted to live forever. So the school board, among others, it was like the city council, we on my way of my stops I'll be making this week. I just asked that the school board consider working with other elected officials, other offices, and other elected officials to find a way to commemorate my dad, whether that's with a plaque, a bench, even maybe naming a building or cafeteria as a way, somewhere on the city and somewhere in the city property. Not only does he deserve that, but the city should scramble to do so for somebody that has touched countless souls and helped shape policies that you guys use and continue to use today. So I just want to thank you again for letting me speak and you guys have a good night. Thank you. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you for coming out. Your dad and I go way back. How old are you?
Forty-four.
Because I remember when you were really young.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's crazy, yeah. It makes sense, though, because I was, I first started having meetings with your dad here, what, 32 years ago? He was with MAPPA and I was at NAACP. I watched you grow up. And I agree, we can't, it's not a genite, but I'm sure we'll find a building name after your dad. Thanks for coming out. Ms. Grande?
You're my boss. I just want to tell you, I'm subbing for you now.
Mr. Husky?
Thank you for being here. He was one of a kind. The first time I got to work with him was when I was teaching middle school here at Curtis, and, you know, it's always an experience to work with your dad, but I had great respect for him and his passion for students. So thank you for being here tonight.
Ms. Sabios?
I don't have to say thank you for coming out.
And Mr. Padilla? Or could be Ms. Padilla? It's Bobby? Padilla? If Bobby Padilla comes in, let me know if we're still in public comments, but allow Bobby Padilla to speak. Linda Hart? Linda Hart?
I want to say too, the last time I was here, I was with your dad. So I even went to go visit him when he was in the hospital. So I just want to say my condolences. And I've known him for years as a community activist as myself. So he's going to be greatly missed. Okay, President, Superintendent and Members. Basically, I'm here today because. I'm going to read a couple of things, but then I'm going to insert, um, certain events that took place. So we all know that California schools were forced to spend two billion dollars for COVID relief funds. To address the learning loss after a lawsuit that was brought by parents. So California was forced to spend two billion to help students recover from learning loss due to school shutdown. After a legal settlement. So I went online to find out what exactly did that mean? And then I contacted your school district to find out, well, how much money did you all receive? And we ended up having a meeting with Ms. Applegate, myself. Pastor Turner, Pastor Beckley, uh, Mr. Redding, Beverly from the NAACP. Uh, Dolores Armstead and Patricia Brown to get more details on what that looked like in our district. But my main concern is something here that states that. Uh, let me get here. Regarded by public counsel as one of the largest education related statements, settlements in the US history. California has also agreed to propose a new law. Enabling the funds to be spent on community organizations with proven track records for improving student success. That that's a must. We contacted the legal, um, council and they said that is one of the things that they strongly want to encourage. So my question is, at what point was parents involved? In the strategic plan of what you probably will be receiving soon? We were told to give our input at a particular meeting. We went and it never was brought up. I've questioned several other organizations that they knew I had any information on this. And they said they have never even heard about it. But when we looked at the budget, it appears that organizations and entities had a budget. So in other words, they knew about it, but the parents did not. So at what point were they actively engaged in coming up with a strategy to help our students? So that's my main concern is when did that take place? Because at the time we thought it was, it wasn't brought up. And so when we talk about accountability. We are going to be holding our own accountability committee. Because we feel now is the time and we can no longer wait because we are in a crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hart. I know that's a recent settlement, so I'm not sure much information we have, but we can, uh. It's not agendized right now, but we'll get the information to you. Ms. Armstead?
Good evening, Board members. Following up on the previous comments regarding the use of the COVID nineteen learning opportunity grant funds. What did or are you using the funds for? Funds are supposed to be used for tutors and other steps to help students already facing adverse education outcomes. Mainly our black and brown students. You did not allow or did not inform other agencies, parents or the community, or the community an opportunity to provide input on the use of funds. Parents and community were not notified. The district made the decisions with no input from parents. Or the community. Uh, regarding the use of the funds or how they felt it should be used. Or how they would be impacted. Parents were never informed. What we want to know is what are the results or what you anticipate the result being? The plans that you are using are the same failed plans you've used for decades. Again, black and brown parents are treated unfairly and our students are being left behind. We want access, we want the ability to access outcomes in a report and how do we access a report? We also want accountability. We want an audit. Who's getting funded? How much they're getting funded? And what are the outcomes of the programs that you are funding instead of just writing these checks out? The lawsuit stipulates that there is a formal complaint form. I want to know how do I get that form so that I can complete it? Again, I'd like to see accountability. Who's getting, what are they getting and what are the outcomes? That's something that we as the community and as parents deserve to get. We don't want to keep seeing the same outcomes we've been seeing where our black and brown students continue to be. At the bottom of all the education outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you very much and we're willing to give you all the information that's requested. I will say this was a lawsuit we brought about, I don't know what school district it was that was being sued. But, uh, was it Oklahoma? It was some other district that was being sued and they got, they reached a settlement with the state. And the state's making sure that they set up for another additional two billion dollars. But we've been getting a whole lot of money. That's what we talk about Esther one, two and three. Uh, and we've involved, uh, all the, all the people, all of the, um. We don't call them stakeholders anymore, but we call them, uh. Educational partners. So we have ongoing meetings all the time. We've been rushing to spend hundreds of millions of dollars over the last two or three years. Uh, and I agree, uh, we can show you the results and what we did with the money. Uh, the last part of Esther three money was supposed to be spent by September of this year. And so we did everything from computers to all the students and all the parents and furniture and. If you look at the, uh, summer school programs and after school programs, uh, we, we've had them like we've never seen before and you won't ever see them again. Uh, we were paying people twice as much money to make sure that we could staff the programs. So we have a whole list of things that we spent the Esther one, two and three money on. Our goal was to make sure that the money got spent for our kids. It was a use it or lose it. So if we didn't spend the money, then it would go away. Uh, so, uh, we did everything we could to ensure that we prioritize what the needs were in the district for our students. And spent that money, uh, as exponentially, but also, uh. Make sure it was, it was spent on things that we knew were going to make the difference pertaining to the learning loss that happened because of COVID. But we'll get you the information and Superintendent meet with you guys. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. And then Bobby Padilla ever show up? All right, that's be our last public comment. We'll go into a closed session now. Thank you. That's the call to meeting back to order? Section five, action reported from closed session. Five point one, approval of elementary school vice principal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee. Robert Moss, elementary school vice principal, Cole Cypress, effective date, work year and salary we determined, funding LO two.
I move second.
It was moved by Ms. Medina, second by Ms. Sabios. Vote please. Motion pass. Dr. Funches?
Board, another homegrown administrator, San Bernardino City Unified School District. Has been with us for seventeen years. I'll say that again, seventeen years. Um, started at Del Valle Middle School Opportunity. Uh, then transitioned to Rio Vista Elementary School, Sancopa Program Facilitator, Rio Vista Elementary School. Hearing panel member and currently coordinator in youth services. And one thing that I'll say stands out. Loves our San Bernardino scholars, right? I'm gonna say that twice. Loves our San Bernardino scholars. Introduced to you at this time, Dr. Robert Moss.
Thank you for that. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, first, me a shout out. You left off Slack, cause I got three of my Slack students right here in front of me. So thank you very much. So first I'd like to, uh, thank the board. Um, I would also like to thank, uh, principals of Cole Elementary and Cypress Elementary. I'm honored to, uh, be taking on this new endeavor. Uh, like you said, uh, this is my seventeenth year being a part of the San Bernardino City Unified School District family. And I'm super excited to move on, um, to the VP capacity. So I'm very excited again to, uh, meet new students, um, their families, uh, the new staff also. I'm not going to stand up here and talk too long, but, um, thank you for this opportunity. Won't let you down. Looking forward to it. Let's go.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item five point two. Approval of number JL twenty-three slash twenty-four dash O three settlement agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved settlement agreement number JL twenty-three slash four dash O three in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. The Board of Education authorized the purchasing director to sign any related documents.
I move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Sabios and second by Mr. Husky. Vote please.
We will need to do a verbal, Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Aye.
For everybody? All those that approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carried unanimously. Five point three expulsion of students. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel. Based on review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students. With identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section forty-eight nine hundred. Four four seven five three one, four six two eight six nine, four seven one six hundred, four eight one four two three. Four nine one two six two and five two one nine one four. You can make a motion as amended. Motion?
I move as amended. Second.
Move by Mr. Husky and second by Ms. Alexander. Vote please. Motion pass five point four, student recommended for a suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses. But remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development. And orders a suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification number as listed below. In accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section forty-eight nine hundred. The student identified below was found to have committed a violation of Education Code Section forty-eight nine hundred. For which a referral for expulsion is mandated. However, due to particular circumstances, expulsion is inappropriate.
I move. Second.
Move by Mrs. Alexander and second by Mr. Husky. Vote please. Motion carried. Item five point five. Recommended for suspension but deleted from student assertive. Discipline due to completion of youth court or due process errors. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for suspension. But the suspension was deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence and/or availability of other means of correction. In compliance with Education Code forty-eight nine hundred. Therefore, although they were recommended for a suspension, the suspension was reversed or modified.
Second.
Move by Mr. Husky and second by Mrs. Alexander. Vote please. Motion carried. Five point six. Lift, readmit of expulsion of student. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorized the re-admission of the following student. With identification number as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations. And in compliance with Education Code Section forty-eight nine hundred.
Second.
Move by Ms. Husky and second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Motion carried. Five point seven, approval of hearing continuance. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the request for a continuance of the administration panel hearing on April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. For the student with identification number as listed below.
Second.
Move by Mr. Husky and second by Mrs. Alexander. Vote please. Motion carried. Section, section six, student board members, reports and comments. Want to start with, uh, board report from Ms. Preciado? Let's start with you.
Well, good evening, every, everyone, board members. My name is Jimena Preciado. I am a junior and I currently attend San Gregorio High School as well as these other two girls sitting next to me. Um, well, San Gregorio is doing currently well. Right now we are going to conduct a research meeting with Mr. De La Torre, the principal of San Gregorio. And we are just going to conduct a research meeting to push for the mental wellness center for all students that they can have access. You know, one day that if they're not feeling good, they, um, have access to, um, be able to attend. That wellness center so that they're able to have somebody that they can trust. But as of that, San Gregorio is doing well and hopefully we do get that wellness center by the end of this year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vasquez?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Silvana Vasquez. I am a senior at San Gregorio High School. It is an honor to be here. I will be doing a quick, a few little updates. San Gregorio High School's prom will be this week on April 20th. Today, we also had volleyball boys senior night. Congratulations to the seniors. I would also like to announce that one of the student board members has committed to the University of Redlands, Ms. Daisy Rojo. I am so proud of her and her accomplishments, and I know that she will do very well at the University of Redlands. I would also like to announce that one of our very own student board members, Tatiana Eden Ochoa, has made so many accomplishments for the debate, and so I will be quoting her. She was one of the top 10 Cajon State qualifiers who competed at the California State Speech and Debate Championship Tournament in Clovis, California. She competed in program oral interpretation where she went on to finals and placed 7th in the state, becoming the first Cajon student to ever be a finalist. The tournament had over 1,000 competing and different events. I would just like to give a huge congratulations to her because her accomplishments and the way that she is achieving so much for our district is without words, speechless, so I'm super proud of her and everything that she has done. I would also like to give a few updates on what the research that I've been conducting about Senate Bill 328. I have gathered research and I have been gathering information about what students say about the new late start times, and I will say that at least half of the students do disagree with the times. I am still progressing on that, and even when I continue on to college, I will continue working with the district and with California to make sure that we can conduct a compromise with legislation. And I'm sure that you guys heard last year, or like the last meeting, I was, I have, I did get accepted into Harvard, and I am so proud to say that I have committed to Harvard University for the class of 2028, and and like I was talking to Dr. Sandra Rodriguez. Not only is this a huge accomplishment for me, but it is a huge accomplishment for our district and our San Bernardino city. Because not only will I be going to pursue my education, but I am going to represent our city and making sure that our, that our city is heard to provide a better education, better, better lives for so many people. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations, Ms. Vasquez. Ms. Elzatma.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Camille Elzatma. I'm a junior over at San Gregorio High School along, as well as these lovely ladies. And I'd like to start off my comments by congratulating all the recipients of the Outstanding Achievement Awards. I think they truly represent what our district and our city represents and represent our morals. While I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Ross on his promotion to Vice Principal. And I'd also like to congratulate Cajon Debate Team. I know that is a big accomplishment, especially within our district. So for carrying our district in debate, I think is incredible. A couple of updates over at San G. Our track is preparing for league finals, which is super exciting. We're doing really well on track right now. We're having Percy Jackson the Musical, so that's super exciting. It's gonna be kicking off this Thursday. So I'm really excited to see what our theater department did. They always put on incredible plays. We're having prom week and spirit week this week, which is super fun to see all the seniors participate in it, and I'm super excited to see all our seniors go to prom. And then state testing, which I'm wishing everybody the best on. I know nobody likes doing it, but it's really important to our city and to our district to do, and so I wish everybody the best and hope everybody tries their best on it to really get that funding for our school and also to show what we are and what we know as a district. And those are all my updates.
Thank you very much. You all did a wonderful job, as usual. That brings us to Section 7, Administrative Reports Presentations. 7.1 undercover anti-bullying restorative conflict mediation presentation. Positive Youth Development Director Marlene Bikenova and her team will present information on our district's highly effective restorative justice intervention, the Bullying and Conflict Intervention System, which includes the undercover anti-bullying team and restorative mediation process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marlene Bikenova. I'm the Director of Positive Youth Development. And this is Michelle Myers, our incredible program specialist and restorative expert. Tonight, we want to share briefly what the bullying and conflict intervention system really entails. And in particular, we want to share the two main strategies that we use within the system, which are the undercover anti-bullying team and also the restorative mediation process. So I always share these things in the form of a story, so I want to tell you what happened to me. In my, as my sixth year as a principal at Curtis Middle School, like many times happened before, an angry mom walked into my office. And this mom said, "My daughter is a 7th grader at your school, and she's been here for months, and she is getting bullied severely." And she said, "My daughter's not like other kids. She is different. And she doesn't necessarily care about how her hair looks and her clothing, so kids have really targeted, targeted her for those things." She said that the bullying is so severe, and it has continued since elementary school. In elementary school, she moved schools twice because the bullying was happening, so that was her attempt to get it to stop. She said, "But anywhere she goes, my daughter Sarai gets bullied." And she said, "Honestly, I don't even know why I'm telling you this, because I don't think that you can get it to stop." So I, I told mom, like, "I'm so sorry this is happening at our school. I'm so glad that you came to tell us." And I said, "You know what, Mom? We have been using this incredible intervention called undercover anti-bullying teams for over a year. So if you'll give us a chance, let me explain what this strategy is, and we think we can get the bullying to stop." Or said, no, I didn't say we think. I said, "We can get the bullying to stop." I was very confident in this, and I said, "I have an incredible counseling team, and they know how to run this intervention, so will you please give us that shot at doing this?" And both the mom and Sarai agreed to allow us to do this. So what did we do? Let me give you in simplest, simple steps. The first thing that Mr. Partita, at the time my counselor, did was he got Sarai and met with her individually and said, "Hey, I'm gonna interview you. Tell me what your experience looks like while you're getting bullied here at Curtis Middle School." So he dictated what her story was. She said things like, "I walk through the hallways, kids make fun of me, they're making fun of my hair, they have nicknames for me in class, they don't sit by me. The kids have really isolated me. I'm by myself, and I feel really lonely. I can't concentrate on my schoolwork." So Partita took down that story, and then he said, "You know, Sarai, how big is this problem? Rate it between 0 and 10. 0 is there's no problem at all. 10 is it is the worst problem that you've ever had." So Sarai rated the problem a 10. So once he met with Sarai, he then said, "Okay, Sarai, I need you to give me the names of six very influential students that are in the classes where you're getting bullied." So he said, "We need students that are, you know, the popular kids, the influential kids. These are, these are kids who the other students listen to. So can you name six of the kids?" So she did that. She named six very highly influential kids. And he said, he explained the process to her and said, "Okay, those six kids are gonna be your team, and their job is to be, act as secret undercover agents, and they're gonna get the problem that you rated a 10 to a 0." So he sent Sarai off to class, and I called in those six highly influential students, and he, he met with them and said, "Hey, team, you know, I called you guys in the room specifically because a student has labeled you guys as highly influential and very powerful students on our campus. Is this true?" And all the six kids were like, "Yeah, you know, we are. We're very powerful kids, and yes, other kids listen to us." So he said, "Great. The reason why you're here then is because the adults aren't able to stop this problem for a student. A student is getting bullied on our campus, and we want to know what you think about it." So he began to read the story that Sarai told to Mr. Partita without her name. And then he asked them one by one, "What do you think about this?" So there in the room, empathy was beginning to be built, and the kids were saying, "Oh, my gosh, I can't believe this is happening at our school. Oh, we gotta help this kid. What's going on?" So he said, "You know, this kid rated the problem a 10, and if you guys are willing to accept this mission, then you'll be undercover agents, and your job is to get the kid, to get this student to rate, to go from a 10 to a 0 in the rating. And this student is going to tell us how well you are doing your job at getting her to 0." So the kids all agreed, "Do you want to be a part of the team?" Every single kid in the room said, "Yes." So great, now they have a team of kids. So what he said is, okay, he revealed that the kid that needed the help was Sarai. And so then they began to create a specific plan of the things they were gonna do as the influential students on campus so that other kids would stop bullying Sarai. So they said, suggested things like, "Oh, in the hallway, I'll give her fist bumps, because when people see me doing that, they're not gonna mess with her." Some of them said, "Oh, we'll have her sit by us and at our table at lunch." Other kids said, "In class, we'll grade papers with her and sit by her, and so that other kids can see that we are friends with her, so no one's gonna mess with her." So the team agreed, and they had a plan, and their plan was to get her to 0. And so then the undercover agents, he told them, like, "Look, don't tell anybody about your plan. The only people who are gonna know that you guys are working as agents is gonna be the principal and myself." So Mr. Partita gave him that, those instructions and said, "Go off and do your plan, and we're going to progress monitor, and each week, we're gonna find out how well you're doing." So he sent them off to go do their plan, and what he ended up doing was calling in Sarai again. So a week later, he calls in Sarai. He says, "Sarai, your team has been working for you on your behalf for a week. How do you feel now? What is your experience at school?" She said, "Oh, my gosh, the, the bullying is almost gone. It's getting so much better. In the hallways, kids are saying hi to me. I have influential kids giving me fist bumps, and I have kids asking me to sit with them at lunch. My experience is so much better." So great, what do you rate the problem now? So at that point, she rated it either a 6 or a 7. And we said, Partita told her, "Okay, great, we're gonna keep going, and we're gonna progress monitor with you again next week, and then we'll keep going till the team gets to 0." She sent, he sent Sarai on her way. And then the following, you know, period, he had the team come back in. So the six kids come back in the room, and he says, "Guess what? Sarai went from a 10, now you got her down to a 6." And here's what she's saying that is different. She's, and then he gives them some feedback as to how each student did. So he did that, and then continued to do that progress monitoring with the team each week until finally, just, it was just a few weeks later, Sarai came in and rated the problem a 0. And she said her experience was completely different at school. She was excited to be there. She could concentrate on what she was doing. And she was so feeling welcomed and safe at, at our school. So she got to that 0, and then we had to call the team back in and said, "Guess what? We got Sarai to 0. You guys did an incredible job at what you were, you were tasked to do, so we're gonna have a celebration." So we had a celebration. Mr. Partita called them in. We celebrated. We read the new story of what she said her new experience was at the school site. So it was an incredible process. The kids were touched. We were, I remember every time I go to these kind of celebrations, you know, tears in everybody's eyes because listening to the story from before and after is incredible. Now, when this, when we met Sarai, this happened about one, about a year after we had started undercover team. So we knew they were gonna, it was gonna work. But before that, we tried so many different things that didn't work, and we especially tried traditional forms of punishment. So on this red slide, these are just some of the things that we did to try to stop bullying. And I promised you, there was one weekend where I sat there Googling how to stop bullying, and I did, I, because I was desperate. I had some very, very tough cases in my year five. So what we did learn is that these things rarely worked or just didn't work at all. And we needed a better solution. So when, when we learned about undercover teams, we were so excited. My two counselors just kind of took to it and started doing them and became experts all on their own. The other thing we tried to do, this is interesting, is that we said, "Well, wait a minute, we can't fix the bullies, because when we punish them, they get, the bullying gets more subversive. We almost make it worse on the poor kid getting bullied." And we realized that wasn't working. So then we said, "Well, let's try to fix the kids who are getting bullied. Let's pull them together, put them in a social skills group, and try to help them maybe not get bullied." So here are the things that we tried for kids who were actually getting bullied, and you can see, like, we did buddy systems, we did safety plans, we did behavior modification. But none of these things worked to help solve the bullying. So it was getting, it was, you know, evident to us that these things weren't gonna work. Now, in my third month of being at PYD, I got a call and they said, "Hey, bullying's coming to your department." So I was like, "Yes," because nobody wanted bullying in their department, because it's very difficult and a lot of parent complaints and things going on. But I knew that we had a solution. We just had to make that system out of it. So with my team, we did that. But one of the big things we learned is that 90, 80 to 90% of the, the bullying concerns that come in are actually conflict. So we want to briefly share the definition with you that we use so that we can determine bullying versus conflict. And then we're gonna share a quick story about how we use the restorative mediation.
Thank you, Marlene. The microphone, microphone is so short. Marlene is so short. Okay. All right, so our first step, what we need to really understand is what bullying is before we can do anything. And this part is really important for us to understand is because this is what we use to assess the problem and to assess the situation. So any kind of concern that we get to our office, or anytime a counselor or administrator asks us for assistance, we always start with assessing the problem. And we use this acronym, R I P, and it's a morbid acronym. And we use that intentionally because we hope that it'll help you to remember the three elements of bullying. And the first element of bullying is that R, and that's the repeated part. And that's, that's what we have heard often. We all have heard in the definitions of bullying that it has to be repeated. We hear it's over, and it's over, and it's over again. Now, the part that sometimes that we don't recognize is that it doesn't have to be repeated. It can also be pervasive. So that's why we say it's repeated or pervasive. And pervasive is when the situation is so profound, it is so widespread, it is so severe, that it doesn't have to happen over and over again. And so two examples come to mind, because a lot of people ask, "Well, what do you mean by pervasive? Like, what is that?" One example comes to mind for like cyberbullying. So when kids are experiencing bullying online, and it's a pretty vicious, like really egregious post, and a lot of students have a chance to see it, like it, share it, comment on it, that doesn't have to happen over and over again. If that is so pervasive, that, that one instance can be bullying. And then an example that comes to mind for in-person bullying is we've seen a lot of examples where kids are pantsed, like in the middle of the quad, where a student will come up to them and they'll just put their hands on the side of their pants and pull them down. And there's a lot of students around. It's the quad. It's a pretty high-traffic area, and a lot of people witnessed that. So we, we would not say, "Oh, that has to happen repeated amount of times for us to consider that bullying." So that's element number one. The second part is intentional and impactful. So intentional, what we're saying by that is it's purposeful. This isn't something that's an accident, didn't accidentally squirt ketchup in your eye. This is something that I'm doing purposeful with intent. And the impactful piece is how it affects the student. And so from their perception and their perspective, how is it affecting them? And we look at a range of different effects, like at home and at school, and how it's affecting a lot of different areas of their lives. And then the last part, which is the most important piece, is that power imbalance. So in order for it to be bullying, we need all three components, and when we think about power, our team is assessing three different areas. So we're looking at social power, we're looking at intellectual power, and we're also looking at physical power. So sometimes kids will use their physical size to have intimidate or have power over students, and so we're looking if it meets that element. We're also looking for instances of, sometimes there's intellectual power that happens, and there's kids that are identified with special needs. They might be, they might have an IEP, they might be an RSP or be in special day class, and there's definitely an intellectual power over them, and we're looking for that. And then the last piece is that social power. That's pretty common as well. And with that, oftentimes, kids have just a lot of social status and a lot of prestige. They're very popular on campus. They have a lot of influence. Kids look up to them. They listen to them. And there's a definite difference between that, that person and then the student that is being targeted. So those are the three elements that we're looking for, and again, this is what we use for our assessments. And when we determine that it's bullying, it has to be all three. And, and one of the power pieces that we mentioned, and if it's a conflict, what we found is the power is fair. So we'll see the R, we'll see the I, but in the P, the power, it's a fair or shared match of power. And so that's how we'll determine the difference between a conflict and, and bullying.
So we want to briefly share a story that depicts what we do when it is a conflict. So we determine this is not bullying, this is conflict, so here's how we, how we do the restorative mediation process. And I, in, two, actually, a couple of years ago, I got a phone call from my high school principal, and she said, "Help, we have these two girls on our campus that have been getting into fights after fights. We've been suspending, our suspensions are going up. But the worst thing is that the, each of the two girls got their friends But the worst thing is that the each of the two girls got their friends involved and it just kept growing from there. And she said, it got so bad that family members got very involved. And there was this one day and there was a video where all the family members came on campus and were um basically going to have a big conflict. They had to call school police. And she said, I I don't know what else to do. Do you have anything restorative that we can do to fix this issue? And I said, absolutely, we do. And I'm gonna send you some of my team members to head over there and uh, you know, assess the situation and apply the right intervention.
Okay, so I am going to attempt to tell you a truncated version of this story because we normally do a full-day training on restorative mediation. So I'm gonna try to abbreviate it. So the first step of our um restorative mediation process is the pre-meetings. And so what we did was when we went to the school site, we asked the administrator, who are the main students that were involved in this conflict? So yes, we understand dozens of students were involved in this big brawl, but who were the main students that were involved? And the administrator told us about two um main students. And so what we did was we asked to speak with those students separately, individually, privately. So that way, um, they get a chance to share from their heart, um, what really happened and how it affected them and what they think needs to happen to make things right. So we called the first student out of class and that's what we did. And we gave them an opportunity to share, like, from their heart, what what really happened and how it affected them and and what they think needs to happen. The first student rated the problem a ten. And we invited that student to the restorative mediation process and thankfully, they accepted it. And then we sent that student back to class. Then we pulled the second student out that was identified as one of the main students as um from the conflict. And we asked the exact same questions, went through the same pre-meeting process. And that student rated the problem a nine. And then we offered the restorative mediation to that student and thankfully, they accepted as well. So we sent that student back to class and shortly after that, we scheduled the restorative mediation. And then that brings us to our second step of the process is bringing the students face-to-face to the actual restorative mediation. And that brings us to the introduction phase. So in this introduction phase is when we're explaining to the students the process and we're explaining to them how this process is actually very different from what they might be used to. Um, the conflict resolution, some, some of us call it the C R's. And we explain to the student that this process is very, it's a very different approach. So we are not playing the role of a judge. We are not playing the role of jury. I'm not here to decide who's wrong or right. That's not even what I'm interested in. What we're interested in is giving you a platform to be able to share from your heart what happened. Now it's face-to-face, so it's the same questions from the pre-meeting. But what makes this really effective is now they both get to hear each other's story. And we, they get to hear how it affected them together and they get to hear um how they want things to be. So as we were moving through this process and we went through the introduction, we also invited them to establish rules and and guidelines for the the mediation. Then we move to the third step and that's the storytelling. So this brings us to like the meat and the potatoes of the intervention and they both got a chance to share. And um their stories were different, but that's okay because they had different perspectives. And during the storytelling is when we found out about the the big brawl and how dozens of people were involved. Family members came from off-campus, this happened at lunch, and it was pretty severe. And during that that story, we asked them how it affected them and we're always curious about multiple effects. And they shared with us how they got suspended. They didn't even get to take their finals that week because it was during finals week. Um, it also upset their parents. Their parents were pretty um disappointed, pretty angry. They didn't get to play um in the basketball game um because of the suspensions and because of the trouble that they were in. So as a result, it affected their grades, it affected relationships between their teachers. They, it affected their their reputation at the school. A lot of the school um administrators and and staff just perceive them as problem students. And so we talked about all of this and they got to hear the ripple effect of what this conflict was doing. And then we asked them to rate the problem and they again rated it a nine and a ten. And we asked them if they were, if this problem were to continue, how might that affect them in the future? So they imagined future effects. If we continue down this path, it's gonna continue to affect our grades, gonna get kicked off the basketball team. I might not graduate, might get expelled, might even get arrested if this kind of stuff continues. Um, so they just imagined the future effects and we asked them if they were happy with that and if they were okay with it or if they wanted something different. And the student said, no, we're not happy with this. That's like such a silly question. We don't want it to be this way. We actually do prefer something different. And then, so that brings us to our fourth stage in the process and that's finding solutions. So once the student said, we're not happy with this. And they both publicly got to hear, I'm not happy with this, you're not happy with this, look at the damage that this is doing to us. That is when we invited them to share, well, how do you prefer things to be? How do you want things to be between the two of you? How do you want the relationship to be? And I'm not gonna tell you how it should be. I'm not gonna say, you need to stay away from each other or you need to be friends again. It's not for me to decide this is your life. How do you want this interaction to be? And they said, we just want respect. We just want to be respectful. We just want the interaction to be respectful. We want um your friends to not mess with me, my friends to not mess with you. Want my my parents to be proud of us. I want good grades. I wanna be a star athlete. And so we talked about those preferences. And then that moved us into the next stage is forming the plan. And um, and that's when they get an opportunity to really brainstorm solutions and talk about two things we asked them. What do you need and what are you willing to offer? And they talked about a lot of different things that they were willing to offer. They were willing to offer apologies. They were willing to offer um to tell their friends to knock it off, to tell their family that they had created a a plan. They created the solution. And then they also said that what they need is respect and they need it to be a respectful type of interaction. So then that's when we came into agreement, went through every single item that they brainstormed and negotiated that. And they made a specific plan for each one. And after that, then we invited them to record, recruit support. So we said, who would be proud of you for doing what you did today? What adults would be proud, who needs to know about this plan? And also what students need to know about this plan? What peers need to know so that way they support this moving forward? So that way you have support once we leave the office. They named every single person in the office, the principal, every single vice principal, every single person that they came in contact with for discipline or suspension. They were like, please tell them that we're trying, we're trying to restore our reputation. And so we did and they named their friends, they named family members. And then after that, we sent them out to try their plan and we progress monitored. So we didn't say like, good luck, we had this meeting with you and hopefully it goes well. We know that this new plan is pretty shaky and um it's not completely strong yet. This is what they prefer. So we came back each week and progress monitored until they built that new story and until they rated it a zero. And they ended up being good friends. They ended up doing TikToks during our progress monitoring. They uh made Valentine's cards and and they just had a really good time. And originally, they just said, we'll just be cool with each other and be respectful. But they ended up repairing their relationship and the damage that was done. And then we just had a huge celebration to celebrate the hard work that they did to repair the damage done by the conflict.
Okay, so we've been doing this for six years now where we go out and we support the sites with this work. And you can see um, since we started this work, we've have served one thousand two hundred ninety-three students. And that means that that many times a concern came into our office, our team was launched out to the site to do the assessment and then determine which intervention the student needs. And we stick with the student until the problem um is rated as zero. Uh, we also work alongside the school counselors to build their capacity so they can do it instead of us having to be there all the time. And the kids can get much faster service that way cuz the site, uh, site counselor's there onsite. So you can see um this year, so far through March, we've had three hundred and two um concerns come to our office. And out of all those concerns, we went out three hundred and two times or the teams did and uh did again assessment and and determine what the students needed. So you can see the very low number of um students that actually what it was bullying. There was twenty-six of those and we had um, we've done twenty undercover anti-bullying teams. So all the other numbers were restorative mediation. Sometimes it was building community with maybe like a sixth-grade group that was very toxic. Um, so they've done all kinds of different interventions with all the other students depending on what they found out during their assessment. So as you can see currently right now too, we have um a number of them in progress across the campus. And in addition, we also have, we're progress monitoring a bunch of conflict mediations. So what we wanna say to um
Um, so this year, we offered uh several serieses of our Restorative University. So in the summer, we offered a two-day workshop and you can see how many people attended here. And then in the fall, we also offered a two-day workshop and going over the same things we talked about tonight, how to assess the problem and how to determine what is the situation using R I M P. And then once you determine what the situation is, then you have to match the intervention to the need. So that two-day training was training and equipping all the participants to conduct the restorative mediation and the undercover team. And then this spring, we we offered a three-day workshop based on the feedback to incorporate um demonstrations and practice. And then here is our data as far as um you can see here, how many schools are equipped and how many counselors are equipped at each different level for the undercover anti-bullying team. So in our department, we work out of a model where we do an I do, uh, we do, and then a you do. So the I do is we're gonna come, we're gonna work alongside you and I'm going to model it for you. And then the second part is a we do, so we'll do it together. And then the last phase is you do it and then we offer support and feedback. So that way, we wanna make sure that our our interventionists feel equipped and they feel confident to be able to do the assessment and then provide an intervention that matches the need for the students. And we want to acknowledge our partner, um California State University San Bernardino. So these ideas um came from specifically the counseling program at Cal State San Bernardino and Dr. John Winslade. He wrote the Safe and Peaceful Schools book, uh, co-authored with Michael Williams. And we just wanna acknowledge that that's where we got these practices from. And that's where we learned um the effectiveness of of using these restorative interventions. Dr. Winslade is a renowned author both internationally and nationally. He was a school counselor, professor at Cal State and um, and now he's retired. But we still want to acknowledge and give credit to where this work came from.
And then um, so I wanna say thank you to all the site counselors out there who are doing the strategies. We have thirty-six at expert level. That means they're on their own doing it now. They just call us to consult when they have a tough case. We also have quite a few of them that are gonna be on their way to expert level. They're trying it out now. They've done a few on their own. They're kind of getting their bearings. So we're very happy to have them really working on this and get becoming experts um so that, you know, our kids can get service much quicker in terms of getting bullying to stop and conflicts to stop as well. And then uh I have to thank our incredible PYD team out there doing the work, um boots on the ground. So of course, Michelle Myers and also behind me, we have Stephanie Fletcher, Justelle Hoskins and Tristan Patel. They are incredible experts and they're building the capacity of all of our sites. And since I have forty-two seconds left on my timer, I wanted to share about Sarai. So let me finish off with this. I saw Sarai about a month after her undercover team in the cafeteria. And I remember looking and I I spotted a girl um that was gonna have an undercover team. So I said, Sarai, hey, come here. And she got up, she came over. And then I said, hey, you see that girl over there um with, you know, with the long hair and the backpack? She's, she's getting bullied and guess what? Her undercover team's gonna start this week. Um, so remember, you know, your undercover team went so well. Um, she's one that's gonna start this week too. She's gonna have that. And she goes, where is she? And I said, that girl right there. And so she walked over, she grabbed the girl's backpack, she said, she said, come, you're coming with me. And then she walked by me and said, she ain't gonna get bullied anymore. I got her, I got this. And she took her out in the cafeteria, took her with her friend and ate lunch with her and nobody bothered that girl. So it was an incredible thing to see that Sarai um went from being completely the victim, moving schools multiple times and nobody could help her. Mom was just desperate to now this incredible person who was standing up for kids getting bullied. Thank you all so much for supporting and for listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Byos.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much for coming and giving this presentation. I was a little bit more familiar, so I am really, really thankful and appreciative that you came and shared it with the rest of us. Um, I can't emphasize enough, um, I was fortunate enough, and I've said it multiple times, to be able to have experienced this firsthand as it, as an interstudent, intern student when I was at Cal State San Bernardino. And hearing it and actually experiencing it are two completely different things. I got to see the process that they, that the, that these ladies go through from step one to second step. And every week, monitor, monitoring this progress, see the transformation slowly, little by little. And and I saw it in elementary students and I saw it in middle, middle school students and I saw it in high school students. And at first, you know, undercover bully teams sounds, you know, so I'm gonna say in Spanish, infantil? In in infantile? Is that a word? Um, but it works for upper, you know, grade students as well. And so just being able to see this, when I left and I went, I I had graduated um my program and I went to work as a school psychologist, I s- I started working with a charter school. And there was a lot more leniency and less evaluations. So I started doing some of the things that I had learned. And I, I must say, I'm ready to quit and do this job. It's that rewarding to just see the transformation and just to be able to be part of that. It, it really touched me and forever changed me because this is the change. Like, it's palpable, you can see it. And so um, again, I fully supported. Um, again, thank you for coming out and sharing with with us. I do have a question um regarding, I guess it's, I'm gonna be very direct. It's, it's growing, we see the numbers through the years. And I know that you guys are working to capacitate school counselors at, you know, the different school sites. Is this capacitation voluntary for school sites at this point?
Um, I would say at this point, no, because our wonderful superintendent has said to the principals and the VPs um at multiple meetings that this is no longer a, an uh, an option. It's, it's a requirement. This is how we do business in San Bernardino. So it has been, that has been very helpful in pushing the work forward.
Awesome, thank you so much for that. And the the second question that I have is, what do you need now? Now, since it's not, no longer an option, what do you need to be able to expand to get us district-wide where we need to be in terms of developing skills um for every school site?
Um, I would say the, the, the thing that could help us is just making sure that um we, as we grow it, we grow with them and we grow with the the program. Um, and just making sure we have the support needed so that we could free them up to go and build the capacity of the sites. Um, and that we have enough boots on the ground to still get kids immediate help if they need it. So it's just that support um under the system so that we can get these things done.
But currently, at this time, what would that look like? For additional support for your team, for your department specifically?
Yeah, probably uh interim counselor-type positions, um, that kind of boots-on-the-ground help.
So how many?
Um, we wouldn't wanna grow too fast, so placing five wouldn't help cuz the training is so intensive. Um, we would say, Michelle wants twenty. No, um, uh, but starting with one, two definitely would be a big help. I would say probably two.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Ms. Pedino?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, this was very helpful and I hear amazing things about the department. Um, so right now, I'm seeing one, two, three, four names. I see five individuals here. How large is the team right now that you have that's doing this work?
This is, um, yeah, these are our specialists. And then um you have Tristan Patel is a student intern and he's incredible. So we're very lucky to find him as well.
Okay, so um now that we're moving forward and I am so glad to hear that the superintendent has um, you know, encouraged or will start putting uh, putting it out there for all school sites to be doing this. I did notice that um how it is now, and maybe you can clarify. So the U A B T, how, you had it separated by schools. In high schools, it said zero. And in the uh, the counselors portion, And in the, the counselors portion, you know, had three, I think it was. So what does that mean when you look at the high school level when it says zero?
So we have some high school counselors that are starting it, but we wouldn't call them fully equipped yet. So we do have some high schools that are really into it. Pacific being one of them. Indian Springs is a number of schools that are really working on these strategies. But we wouldn't call them fully equipped yet where they can do it pretty hands-off. I know, like, Pacific does a lot of restorative mediations, but maybe they're not, they're not proficient yet on undercover teams. So we're kind of trying to, you know, grow some of our high schools in their capacity.
And then also to add on to that, our high schools usually have a team of counselors. So some counselors might be equipped on the team, and then we're trying to build the capacity of the entire team. So like, for example, we have a couple counselors at Indian Springs that are proficient with the process. And then what we want to do is to build the capacity of the entire team.
And what does that look like? Because the thing is that, like I'm, like I'm seeing, there's only five of you. And for how many counselors throughout the school district and even a high school, how many counselors are in a high school? So how are you able to do this the way you have it now? And then I, and I understand you mentioned one, two, but realistically, how many counselors are there? And if we're only, we only have a few sites that are fully ready, there's, there's still like more than eighty percent or about eighty percent that are not. So then, you know, how, what is it, is it like a session? What do you have, a workshop? Or what, what, what is it that, that you're doing?
So when we get a bullying concern, that's when we go out to the site and then they work alongside the counselor. And then they also often work alongside the VP or the principal because they need to understand it as well. So yeah, they just go and do the strategy so they can watch. So we tell them, sometimes I'll call a principal and say, hey, make sure your counselor's watching them do it. Don't let them just do it. It's not, we're not here to be separate. We're here to build the capacity of your site for you. So the principals will require their counselors to go sit in and do it alongside us.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Mrs. Alexander?
Thank you. Thank you for the great presentation and the storytelling. That really helps. And then the way you ended the story is awesome. I'm big on numbers, so I was just wondering, would, when I look at just the years, the progression, and then we're at the sixth year, which seems to be definitely much higher if you were to do a year-over-year analysis by the end of the year because we're only in the fourth month, what's driving those numbers? But the outcomes seem a little different where there's only twenty-six bullying and twenty UABTs. And then, right now, if you add the seven, it's twenty successful. So can you give us a little bit more information around that?
So out of the three hundred-two, there was also a lot of restorative mediation. So there was a whole bunch of other interventions that aren't listed here. It's just a lot of data. But we can also say, so if you saw after the shutdown year, so you see in 2020 how low the numbers were because that was, we were online. We still ran three teams completely online, by the way, for cyberbullying. Works just as well. And then after that, conflict just became, I think, one of the bigger issues in our district. Kids not being able to relate to each other, getting into more conflict. Also, we attribute some of it to now kids know there is a process, so now they're reporting more. Sites are reaching out, are also putting in QR codes when they know they need to help. So my also part of that is gonna be just the idea that people now know there is help. And so they'll put in a QR code to get us to come out and help them.
Okay. Is there a way to, or maybe you already have it to see, because I heard you say restorative, or you've restorative, but to really see what's happening with those numbers that aren't falling into those scholars that are not falling in these categories? Do you have that somewhere where you're documenting where they're going?
Yes, yeah. It gets, it's quite complex, our data sheets, but we do have track, any tracked data for all of the different interventions that occurred. And we're getting better at it now. We didn't think to track some of them over the past years, but this year, we're tracking. Okay, this is how many restorative mediations we did. This is how many community building circles we had to do or whatever, whatever the intervention was needed. Yeah.
Right. And one more question. So I, I think you touched upon it, but I just wanted to get more clarity. So I see that elementary schools, their numbers are larger than anybody else. What's inspiring that? In terms of the workshops?
So we have more elementary schools than we do middle school and high schools. So I think we have over fifty-five elementary schools, so the numbers are a lot larger for elementary than they are for middle and high school.
Oh, that, just so I understand. So you're saying because of that, that's why you have more attendees from the workshops? Because we have more elementary schools?
For the workshops? Oh, no, no, no. You mean the attendees? Oh, okay. No, sorry. We were thinking just. Yeah.
Yeah, so we just receive more concerns from elementary just because the volume of students at elementary is, is larger. And so that just creates more of an interest from our elementary interventionists as far as like, how do we respond? How do we intervene? We know that you helped us with a couple cases, but they were just motivated to become fully equipped and, and supported.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Hoski?
Thank you, team. It, it was really good to hear all, all the stories, some of which I know very well. And to that end, I was part of the, you know, the, the story that Michelle told. And you missed the best part, that we, they discovered why the conflict was, and neither one actually knew what it was. And it was the young lady that had become part of the basketball team. The others had felt left behind. And nobody, they, it was through this process that they were actually really able to identify the real source of conflict. Because they were all saying that this was, this was the problem, this was the problem, this was the problem. But anything we would have done wouldn't have solved it because they didn't get to the actual source of the conflict. And it was, you know, it, it was being, felt being left out, left behind, that you didn't care anymore, you know, all these different things. And so that's something that this process does that none of the other conflict processes do, is allow you to actually get to the, to the meat of the problem. Because oftentimes, you, you resolve it by saying, you know, hey, y'all need to just be nice, you know, ignore it, make it, make it go away. But you never actually resolve the conflict. And so I appreciate that story because I think it illustrates very well the difference between a restorative conflict mediation and other types of conflict resolution. I also wanted to mention that the Dr. Winslade and, and that book, Safe and Peaceful Schools, if you haven't, I think the board was given that at one point in time, but it was also the basis for our youth court. It was with Dr. Winslade and his work that we were able to create our youth court. And it was something that made our youth court different and, and, and had other folks looking to it because we did some very different things based on what Dr. Winslade's work was. You know, I can't. Ms. Byos, you said some, some of the things that I wanted to say, and you said it so well from the perspective of a parent. But I can't tell you how well undercover anti-bullying teams and the restorative conflict mediation works as compared to other processes to, to, to resolving issues between our scholars on campus. And I really am hoping that we can accelerate a little bit. Our, our, the push to full implementation at our school sites. I know we have to go slow to go fast because it is kind of intensive to learn. But I also know that these four folks, having been one of them, that these four folks can't continue to try to raise the expertise of our staff and be our interventionists at the same time. And so figuring out, to, to your question earlier, you know, what is needed for full implementation? And some of my questions is, is what is our articulation? We have other counselors that are doing tier, tier, two, tier, tier, two and three interventions in Swiss. Is there some way that we can, you know, are they articulating? Is there work that we can do to try to, you know, bring? We've already got folks out of the classroom in the field doing some of this work that might be able, you know, we might be able to utilize. I don't want to say repurpose, but utilize their skill sets as well. I know that we have some of these experts at the school site. Is there a way that we might be able to utilize them to help support schools near their, you know, an elementary school near them? I met, I met, just because they were here today, I'm at Cole, and now I'm gonna go help Cypress, you know? You know, or Wilson and, you know, or Arrowhead and Parkside, you know, schools that are nearby that, I don't know that, if those counselors are, are experts or not. But I, you know, just, I'm just trying to find some ways to take some of the pressure off of this team because what they've done in the last six years is gargantuan. Like, I cannot tell you how much work that they've put in, how many hours they've put in, you know, within the time and without. So I don't know what that looks like, Mr. Ariano and, and Dr. Rodriguez. You know, I, I don't know if anything, the suggestions I just made are even feasible. But I know that, like, this is, we have a, you know, Golden Bell award-winning program that we know works like nothing else. And I'm hoping that we can figure out how to, to reach full implementation with it. And I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing and trying to do that because I know how tired you are because you tell me. So, you know, anything we can do to support you because you're supporting our scholars in a way that, that, you know, few are. And so, thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Bykandova.
Ms. Grande?
I too want to say thank you very much for all of your hard work, dedication, and passion. And I imagine, what I, my comment is, is I imagine that those undercover teams that you developed and engaged and enrolled into this project by making it fun. I, I just, I imagine that they really enriched their own lives and then personally. And I just wonder if you collected any kind of anecdotal or data on them and, and find the positives? Because even after this, you have now taught a whole army of people how to have empathy. You've actually trained them to see things through other people's eyes. And that right there really stood out to me because you didn't just leave behind little spirits that had been broken. You left behind leaders behind you. You left, you didn't just replicate and leave behind big shoes to fill. You left, you left behind people with bigger feet than yours. So for that, my heart is full. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the support. Thank you.
A question for you. Does it work, this program work as, as well for boys as it does for girls?
Absolutely, yes. Kinder, on up, boys, girls, yes. In fact, the, the kids, even high school kids, we make agent cards. Says you're a secret agent, undercover agent for life. And they get upset if you don't give it to them. So boys, girls, these are like prized possessions, and they keep them in their wallet. And we tell them, once you're an agent, you're an agent for life. So you see a kid getting bullied, you know you're an influential kid, go and support that kid in some way to get the bullying to stop without waiting for the adults.
So just so I get a feel for the capacity, in terms of the number of parents that are asking for help with bullying, what percentage are you guys handling? Ten percent, twenty percent? What is it?
So, oh, so the parent, okay, parents come in, like, what percentage? Can you repeat that question?
I'm just, just in general, let's say out of high school.
Oh, okay.
I got parents who, and I'm talking about, I get, I get the calls from the parents who are truly frustrated. My kid is getting bullied.
Yeah.
You know, they need help. So how many of those parents you guys serve? Are you serving most of them or, or what are the numbers like?
Well, yeah, every parent that comes into our department saying their kid is either in bullying or conflict, every single one of them.
I'm not talking about the ones in your department, well, maybe.
That come. Oh, the, these numbers here that we're showing were the ones that my team did. Does that make sense? And then the ones, the, the counselors at the school site are also the ones that are equipped, are doing undercover teams or restorative mediation.
But you just hit something I'm trying to get at.
So wait.
You, you said the one, you, you guys can talk after I finish. Just put your line on, make notes. But you, you just hit on something. You said for the ones that are equipped. So I'm looking at the ones that are not equipped. I, I, the kids are still getting bullied.
Yes.
So what happens to the?
So the school will put in a report for the kid so that we come out and do it with them.
Is there a waiting list?
Um, yes.
And how long is the waiting list?
Um, probably three weeks, three weeks out sometimes for a kid to get seen.
And how many, and how many kids are on that list?
Um, I, I wouldn't know the number. Currently, we don't have any outstanding, they're all scheduled. I would say scheduled would be the start. Yeah, we can't, don't know that exact number right now, but we have all of our kids. So if anybody has to put in a bullying report, they already have their day scheduled to be interviewed or progress monitored.
Does that, that makes a huge difference. And when you're talking about a, a parent that's at the wits end, they're crying. My kid is being bullied, and I tell them, okay, we'll get you in three weeks. That seems like an eternity to them.
Correct.
So I just want to get a feel for where we're at. Because I have parents watching this meeting.
Absolutely.
And I'm just screaming at the chief, screaming, screaming at their screen, you know, you're not helping my kid right now. I just want to know where we're really at, you know what I mean?
Yes. And then if we have severe cases, we will push them up to try to get them help. We do also have some counselors that are going to other sites nearby to, we call them the support team. And they go out and run some too. So if, if a kid is waiting too long, we'll call the support team. We have some counselors at Paakuma, Mount Vernon, Rodriguez. Those ones go out to other sites so that they don't have to wait so long. So we try to schedule it, and then we look at our schedule and determine who needs help sooner. Parkside.
And then the, I'm just trying to project the future. And, you know, for me, true artificial intelligence is scary to me. I'm not talking about this, people call, you know, everything artificial intelligence. It's not artificial intelligence. It used to just be automation, right? But when you get to a point where you truly have a computer or a phone making decisions and being able to help people do stuff in a bad way. So what role are, are our phones playing right now with this? And is it making the problem worse? And is there, you know, because my thought is we should at least try to mitigate the problems that phones are causing. So let's say at the middle school level, should we, as a district, say, okay, we want to do a pilot and say that at a certain middle school, we're gonna have them check their phones in, in the morning, and they get them back at the end of the day, and we can compare that site with another site in terms of bullying and other problems that I think phones are, are causing. Do, do phones cause a problem with bullying?
Phones absolutely contribute. Kids are, you know, going on and sending messages they wouldn't normally say in person. However, I would say our approach is, I think, if we could build empathy in those kids, they won't send those kind of messages. Because I can take your phone away, you're still gonna get on your laptop or your iPad or your Apple Watch and send that message. But if I build your empathy and you understand how your actions affect others, then we're gonna prevent that behavior from happening in the first place. I think that's probably a easier way.
So you hit something on there. So, so you think that if, if, you're saying that a student that doesn't have a phone will get into same electronic problems without the phone because they'll use their laptop or a computer?
Yeah, we've seen the kids use whatever device they have. So whatever device they have, they may be sending, you know, messages. Though I think the root problem of that kid would be, or the, the issue that we're dealing with is lack of empathy or, you know, thinking that these messages are okay to send. So for us, we really want to build empathy. So I think what Mary Allen said, at Curtis Middle School, we had an army of kids because we ran so many teams at the beginning of the year, that we would have an army of kids out there. Mid-year, Cindy Holly, my counselor, would say, I don't have any more undercover teams to run because the kids were out there with empathy, who had power and influence, were out there doing the work. And then every time we would get new seventh graders in, we would have to run five teams at the beginning of the year. Midway through the year, there wasn't as much, there was like almost no teams to run. So it's really for me is having schools that are safe, welcoming, that five-to-one positive ratios, and we're building empathy with kids. We're sharing these stories. We're putting them on teams.
So you're saying phones not a problem, they should?
It's, the phones definitely exacerbates the problem. It makes it worse and tougher to deal with. But if you have undercover agents that have empathy and are teaching others to treat other, each other kindly, I think you're, it's easier to combat it that way.
Talk about the phone. So there's nothing we should do with phones? Just leave it the way they are?
I, I wish we had a, a magic app for that to like stop all messages. I just think it'd be very much harder to police the phones than it is to.
Let me ask you this question.
Yeah.
Do we have a substantial number of problems that get created with phones during school?
So what we've found is ninety-five percent of cyberbullying or bullying that's happening through any kind of electronic device. or bullying that's happening through any kind of electronic device or social media is an extension of school-based bullying. So usually it's not an isolation. It's not that the school, the student is getting bullied only on social media or only through the device. It's they're getting bullied in person and then it continues with the device. So it's just, then the kiddo can't escape the bullying. So it's happening in person, then they go home and it's continuing on Instagram, TikTok, text messages. So, I mean, yeah, personally, I want to get, I want to shut down every social media site for any kid and the devices. But what, what we're finding is they're still getting bullied in person. That's why the students, they're usually can have a good guess of the anonymous, where the anonymous messages are coming from. Because it's coming from the same kids that are bullying them in person.
So let me ask you a question. So I'm naive when I tell parents, I have parents who come to me and say, "My kid is getting bullied on Instagram or Snapchat or whatever." And I just say, "Well, then take them off of Instagram, Snapchat and Facebook." I don't, I don't do any of the social media stuff. And now parents look at me like I'm crazy, like, "How do you live without social, without Instagram, Snapchat?" But you can. And if, and if, and if your only bullying is coming through social media, then don't do social media. But do you, do we have any cases where we, where parents tell the kids or we tell the kids to stop doing it and they stop doing it and the problem goes away in terms of cyberbullying?
Can you repeat the last part of your question? Do you have any parents that?
Do you ever, is that ever a solution? Just to tell a kid, "Don't do social media"?
I mean, we have an entire parent workshop around like cyber safety and how to monitor your kid's phones and devices and all the things that they're doing. So I think what you're saying is absolutely important. But because ninety-five percent of the time when kids are getting cyberbullied, it's also happening in person, then we're only going to address about five percent of the bullying cases that are only happening online. Because most.
So you're saying only five percent only happen online?
About five percent is only through technology. Because most of the time, the kids that are, that are experiencing cyberbullying are also getting bullied at school. So they're getting bullied in both areas. They're getting bullied at school and then they're, then they can't escape it because it's also happening on TikTok, is what I'm saying.
Well, I just got to tell you, I, I just think not doing social media is a big help. I have fellow board members who get bullied on social media. I never get bullied on social media because I don't do social media. And it's a beautiful feeling.
And.
I, I hear the stress about, "Did you see this? Did you see that? And did you see what she said and he said?" I never see it. I'm just oblivious to it, like, "What are you talking about? Well, it says something about you too, but I don't know, so does it bother me?"
What we do see often is a lot of conflicts escalate through social media. That's what we see a lot. A lot of conflicts get brewed over the weekend or outside of school using the device. So we see that a lot with conflicts.
I just would encourage, just me personally, I would encourage parents, especially for elementary age kids and even middle school kids. Your kid does not have to have a phone.
Correct.
And if the phone is causing problems, then just get rid of the phone. It's easy. And parents, just because it's today's society, we really think that you can't go without a phone. And some parents are the problem. I've heard stories where parents said, "You've got to let my kid take my text message during school." Doesn't make any sense to me. As a, as a society, I think we really need to back away from the phones with our kids because it's totally not needed. I, I, I wouldn't say we're going, I was, I was hoping you guys would help me and say, "Yeah, it's a good idea, Mr. Tillman. Let's go ahead and have a pilot where we ban phones from the school. But you don't want to help me, so I'll leave that one alone." Ms. Sabios?
Um, I, I actually wanted to kind of chime in into the question that you were asking because I, I think if I may, I don't want to speak out of, out of turn, but I think that a lot of times when parents reach out to you, they're not handling all of the parent concerns because they don't get all of the parent concerns. They only get the parent concerns that the sites refer over to them. Right? So that could be.
Or if parents come directly to us, yeah.
Or if parents have learned of the information. But, but I think that a lot of times, we as parents don't know that this is an option or a good intervention. And oftentimes what happens, because I've seen it as well, when the site tries to refer, or anybody else tries to refer a parent to this department specifically, sometimes they don't want it because of the failed attempts of interventions that have happened that have resulted in lack of, you know, lack.
Parents don't want to try.
Yeah, because of the, because of the failed attempts of other interventions that have happened. So when they get to this point, they're like, "No, it's not working, you know, I want..." And then oftentimes they're asking the school side and dictating things that they want that sometimes are more punitive to other students that are not going to help, that have been proven to not be successful. And so I think spreading that word, right? And then trying the appropriate intervention that, again, we've seen helps, will I think help in building trust in the parents as well to say, "Okay, here's something that actually does work." So I just wanted to kind of add, add to that. And in regards to the phones, I think, I think that it would be a good idea. I would support that, actually. If you wanted to pilot a specific, like middle school or something, somebody that, you know, a principal that's willing to volunteer, because I'm curious to see the outcomes of that. The only thing that I have to add to that would be, you're not old, Mr. Tillman. We, we're entering a new era where I, I would not like students to be completely secluded and isolated from using some of these technologies. I think the key thing is teaching them how to appropriately use it. And I think that part of that teaching includes building empathy capacity, right? To, to have them use it responsibly, right?
And, and I only broach the issue of technology because I truly believe that it's only going to get worse. As technology becomes more powerful, the problems will be worse.
That's why we got.
They have a problem right now at LA Unified where they're transposing people's faces on videos and pictures at middle school. And, and it's, and as it becomes easier and easier to do, then you're going to have more and more problems because of it. And the sad thing for me is, if I sent it to Mr. Ariano, he's innocent. But then he sends it to somebody else, so now I've gotten someone else involved that wouldn't have gotten involved if they didn't have a device. I just hate to see kids get in trouble just because they had this device and somebody sent them something. If they didn't have the device, it wouldn't have happened. That's what.
I think we got to jump ahead of that, though, and, and teach them how to use it responsibly because it's not going away. On the contrary, it's, it's getting worse.
At one point, it should go away. There's no, there is no reason for elementary kids to have a phone. It just isn't. Ms. Chusky?
Yeah, I, to the point on the phones and deep fakes, those are the, that's what they're called. So, you know, I would also support, you know, potentially, depending on what it looks like, some kind of a pilot program around phones at a school. I think the question was very narrowly broached to them because the problem with phones is much greater. The kids that want to be famous because they, they, they do the filming of fights. The kids that want to fight so that they can be famous, Fight Club kids, to be famous for their fights, right? So we've, we've seen conflicts that aren't really conflicts. It's about being famous, right? Fight famous. So, you know, about distractions in classrooms and, and the distraction from learning when you're busy texting your mom or your girlfriend or boyfriend or whomever, your friend friend. You know, so there's, I think there are a lot of issues to talk about that, you know, what is the, you know, what is the appropriate use? Or how is a phone or any device a tool versus, you know, a distraction or a problem? And so I think, you know, I think it would take more conversation than just saying, "Let's ban phones," to figure out what is it that we do to try to help our students use technology effectively and empathetically. In terms of how this all works, you know, it works with kindergartners. You know, you, you might have to, like, they don't understand zero to ten, so we made a little chart that looked like rocks from a little tiny pebble that annoys you in your shoe to a big boulder falling on you, right? They could, they, so there's ways to, to adapt it, you know, from, from kindergarten in through high school. It also works with groups. I wa, we were, did one where there was like six, six, sixth grade girls, you know? So we've, we used it at, at a middle school with, it, it, with sort of the situation we just talked about with one, the, the fight issue. With some, some young men who were trying to get their machismo back, I guess, because they lost a fight and the fight was filmed. And, and, you know, so there, all this stuff was coming out of that. That there wasn't really any true conflict anymore. It was really about self-esteem. So it works in a lot of different, different places. And, you know, our ability to build capacity. I think they were being modest in the amount of work that they are actually doing versus our school sites, just because the capacity is not yet at our school sites. You heard they have basically three schools that have, that are well, trained well enough that they could go teach somebody else. That's kind of the level you need to be at to successfully implement that program. I think our staff can do it. I, I know our folks are very capable. But they don't have time to be the interventionists for every three weeks.
I think we hear, and the good thing is the superintendent heard that also.
Yeah, I just, yeah. So I'm just echoing what you're saying in terms of trying to, to make that happen and make sure that we are, you know, we have that, we have that ability to at least resolve these, these types of conflicts. And, and to Ms. Sabios' point, often when we're at sites that haven't, have not yet been able to get that capacity, they try what they know and it doesn't work. And the parents are angry and frustrated. And we use the word, you know, mediation or, or, you know, or they think that, that, you talked about, you know, juvenile or infantile, you know, "Oh, what are these little secret agent teams? You know, our secret agent's going to help my eleventh grader." Well, they do. So we have to find out how to talk and, and talk to our parents about when they call us to, you know, we need to be able, and that's part of why I wanted this, is we need to be able to talk about it when folks call us and say, "We have an intervention that works. You got to give us a chance to implement it."
Ms. Medina, this would be the last comment under seven.
Yeah, no, and I just want to, maybe with regards to what you're focusing, and I think this is where we have to kind of draw the conversation back, is that you're, you're addressing the actual root of the problem. And the root of the problem is whatever the situations, you're trying to figure out what's going on. Cell phones are just a tool that the person uses to kind of go back to what the root of the problem is. And so I think, I, I'm not too much in favor. And I guess we should have like an agendized item or have some type of conversation when it comes to devices. Because there are many children who, that, that's their safety, you know, when they're, they're walking home. They're, they're at risk of human trafficking. There's a lot of things going on while they're walking home. So I wouldn't want to eliminate it completely, but those are conversations we can have. Maybe if we have it agendized. But I do want to thank you because you are, you're really dealing with the root of the problem. You're trying to find out what's the cause of the problem and trying to look at solutions and how, and not pushing ideas for the students to come up with, but having it themselves to reflect and so forth. So I appreciate it. I do want to provide, if we have any resources, to help them expand their team to a, a, a number that is, you know, productive to what the work they have to do. And so, but thank you so much.
And I'm not going to let Ms. Medina get me in trouble. I'm not proposing taking phones away from students. I said they can check them in in the morning and check them in at night. So when on the way home, they have their phones and before school, they have their phones and after school, they have their phones. Do not say, Danny Tillman said, "You're going to take your phone and the kids can have phones."
Well, we can, always look at, we can get parents that come later on that would say, this is what we heard.
I want, that's why I'm clarifying it.
Okay, good.
I'm not proposing taking your children's phones away. I just think during school, I can't see a purpose. Why do you need a phone during class?
During class, okay, thank you.
That brings us to Section Eight, Eight Point One, Discussion and Possible Renaming of Indian Springs High School Manufacturing Product Development Machining Shop. And I ask for this to be agendized. And I, and I think that we should agendize another item at one of the upcoming board meetings to even discuss naming a building after Ms. Navarro, yeah, Gil Navarro. But this one is for the late school member, Mike Gallo, who was very instrumental in the Indian Springs Manufacturing Shop. And really without him championing that, it probably wouldn't have happened. And so I want to ask the board to consider naming that shop after Mike Gallo.
Please support.
I would motion to do so.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead. Well, you making a motion to name it?
Yes, Mr. President.
It's been moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Ms. Chusky to name the Indian Springs High School Manufacturing Product Development Shop after Mike Gallo. And then, and, and we'll have discussion, yes. So first person is Mrs. Alexander?
I'm a supporter. I just have a question. Because this is a pathway and it's linked to the middle school and the elementary school. Are we looking to do any type of linkage? Are you just wanting to rename the manufacturing shop at Indian Springs?
There's actually a shop there.
I've been there.
Right.
So just that one?
Just want to name that shop, right, the building.
But do you understand what I'm saying, though? Like, because being long, they're, they're all together.
I'm not talking about that.
Okay, okay. No problem.
Keeping it, keeping it simple. We can put a name on that building. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, just want to say thank you for putting this on the agenda. And I was very fortunate to be with Mike just days before he had passed. And he's the reason why I am on this board. Yeah, he recruited me with a few other folks and talked me into it. So I owe him in spades for that. But no, he was a, he was actually a great mentor and, you know, wow, it's just, it's, it's hard to not have him here. You know, I will miss him and he's made a great contribution to our district, to our students, to our city as well. You know, he's done a lot of great things and just, I'm really excited to see this and it is timely. And I do appreciate the comment out, Mr. Navarro as well. You know, I'd like to have said more when his son was here, but now this is just quite a recognition for him. And, you know, I think a number of us have been fortunate to serve with him and Dr. Hill. And now we have, we'll have two amazing facilities named after two of my great mentors. And so I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. I, I mean, the whole pathways thing was something that Mike, I mean, Mike Gallo was just adamant about. And we did so many pathways because of his enthusiasm. And this is before it became a buzzword. So it's just something that he was passionate about. And so we were able to do a lot of good things as a district because of that. So it just makes sense for us to name this shop after him. So we have a, it's been moved by Dr. Wyatt. It was seconded by Ms. Chusky. Let's vote, please. Motion passed. Section Nine, Nine Point One, Personnel Report.
As President.
I move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Husky and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Ms. Alexander? Nine Point Two, Resolution to Adopt Addendum to the Family Resources Center and District Police Headquarters Project Environmental Impact Report and Other Written Findings.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Husky and seconded by Ms. Medina. Discussion? Vote, please. Vote, please. Motion passed. Nine point three, revocation and authorization of special program expenditures.
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mrs. Alexander. Vote, please. Motion carried. That brings us to nine point four, adoption of board bylaws, public statements, nine point four.
I move. Second.
Moved and second, moved by Mrs. Alexander.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passed. Nine point five, adoption of board bylaw ninety-one twenty, officers and auxiliary personnel.
I move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please.
Mr. Tillman?
Motion passed. Nine point six, adoption of board policy forty-nine, one, one, three point two, one, professional standards.
I move. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander and second by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Motion passed. Nine point seven, adoption of board education meeting calendar.
I moved.
And uh, Ms. Husky, as you look at this and this, you okay with it? I know you have some concerns about the calendar. It was moved by Ms. Medina and seconded by the only concern I had on the two um, November and December and January, there's only one board meeting. Is that going to be enough? Got to add, then we will, right? Moves and second, right? Vote, please. Motion passed. Nine point eight, compensation for school board member per district board policy number twenty ninety-two fifty and education code three fifty-one twenty. A, a member may be paid for meetings he, she missed when the board by resolution finds that he, she was performing designated services for the district at the time of the meeting or that he, she was absent because of illness, jury duty or hardship deemed acceptable by the board. The board education approves compensation for board member Mary Ellen Grande for the April second, twenty twenty-four school board meeting due to illness.
I move.
Moved by Ms.
Second, okay.
Moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Ms. Husky. Vote, please. Yeah. Motion passed. Action ten, consent items. Moved by Ms. Husky.
Second.
Second by Ms. Medina. Any to pull?
Ten point four oh.
Excluding ten point four oh. Call for the question?
Will need to abstain.
Now, I I haven't gone to any of the recent um, sessions on Brown Act. But are you, when you have a conflict, I don't think, they used to say you're not supposed to abstain, you just recuse yourself. Is it still the same? Some of you new, you guys haven't gone through the class. I, the new ones are supposed to be going through these classes. Yeah, you have your, you got the doctors in the board stuff. Right, what do they? Right, when you, when you have a conflict of interest, are you supposed to accuse yourself? So you don't abstain, right? Yeah. Right, so that's my point. So you don't vote at all. Yeah, that's what they recommend. So you don't abstain, you just don't vote on it. Right. No, they, the item got pulled, we're going to bring the item back. At that time, they would just recuse themselves. So we, we had a motion second and we voted on consent items?
Waiting for Ms. Alexander to approve.
She's not, she's going to recuse herself. Oh, no, she's going to vote for these, yes. Everything except for that one, right? Okay? Motion passed. Ten point four zero.
I moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Section eleven, eleven point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association. I'm sure uh, Ms. Cox, that was her comment, right? Eleven point two, California School Employees Association?
No report.
Eleven point three, Communication Workers of America?
No report.
Eleven point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association?
No report.
My agenda went away. Okay, board members' comments. Let's start with uh, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. Well, um, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to say congratulations to all the scholars that are finding out with colleges that they're going to. I think it's really super awesome that we're um, hearing the stories of our scholars continuing their education or even pursuing um, other avenues. Like I met a young man who's going into the army that attends uh, Pacific High School. So I thought that was really great and um, makes us very proud. So I just wanted to say general congratulations to all of our seniors. Um, with that, I had an opportunity to go to the dual immersion program for San Bernardino High School and I thought that was great. Um, just to be able to see so many scholars that I think they awarded about forty that are graduating with San Bernardino High School and that was last week. Um, and just made us proud. It was a great program. We had the four lyrical dancers and um, a band that was at a mariachi band that was great. Um, and then Parkside Elementary did Black History Rematch and um, I thought that was great. Dr. Lewis, which she did, like apparently her scholars didn't do that well when we had the Black History B during Black History Month. And the objective was just to make sure that they understood and it was a diverse group of scholars. In addition to that, she had uh, pleuralical dancers again and the cheerleaders and it was a really great family engagement activity. So um, congratulations to Dr. Lewis who continues to, I guess, rise from what I understand that she's been a principal at Parkside. Um, I also uh, attended the Teamsters event. Uh, but what was important to note was San Andreas was there, so their business business technology pathway. And today we received a flyer regarding their their tour. So if we can all support somehow or another, but what's important on here is um, there's been a lot of questions related to our pathways program. And um, are they purposeful? Are we um, integrating a pathway for our elementary schools and our middle schools? And when you look at this, you can see um, that there is a pathway that they're even highlighting what they're doing with other schools, particularly uh, middle schools and just along with also community engagement. Um, I know that they recently received an award, but I I want the community to know that our pathways are linking um, not only just students that are in high school, but they're making it purposeful for elementary school students as well as middle school students. And um, this is one that is definitely highlighted because they came to our meeting today. And then lastly, um, many of us were able to go to the Soul Point music. Uh, they were, uh, the Soul Point Band was installed in the California Music Hall of Fame, which was really nice. And uh, like to just congratulate the band, um, Jumanis Chess, who is actually a graduate and goes to San Bernardino Valley College now. However, he continues to uh, be an inspiration to a lot of our high school students and um, out there in the forefront and just being that musical genius. And his mom, Veronica Martindale, did a great job. And then one other thing, um, I also attended the Pride event and I, what I liked about the Pride event was the fact that our scholars that took the risk that just explained their story uh, was really good. Uh, to be able to hear what they were sharing and then also um, how they're trying to make sure that they're growing their community in the sense that others that don't feel comfortable in their space are speaking up. And I appreciated that for them to take that risk. And then I also went around and talking to to many of the vendors and it was interesting just hearing um, from those that just are advocates that are really trying to um, advocate for students that are part of the LGBTQI community, but also um, just others that are there to support. So I thought it was a great event. I commend them. Um, and I just, it was a overall great weekend. I was tired, though. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Medina?
Oh, I have one more thing. I'm so sorry. Um, the next board meeting, I will not be present. Um, I'll be online because I'll be traveling for business.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Just to piggyback on um, Ms. Alexander, uh, it was, uh, I mean, not only was it a great event, it was um, visually just beautiful. I just want to say that, um, and the fact that they came down, uh, we had several staff that came down and just to speak how appreciative they were. Uh, it was, it was a great event all around and I just love um, the way superintendent spoke. And I I loved hearing from students and just seeing the smiles uh, from families, from students, from staff. Just feeling like they're in, they're, they're included. They're not excluded. They're included. And and sometimes people feel we're pushing a narrative. No, we're not. We just want to make sure everyone feels respected and find a place of their own to feel safe. And so it was just a fun event all the way around. And so I just want to say thank you to our district. This is the second one and more to come. But um, I really do appreciate what others are are trying to dismantle. We continue to make sure that we're being inclusive. And um, we will not let anyone feel isolated or bullied or intimidated. So I really appreciate our district for doing that. Um, I also attended an Aleo conference, which was great. I mean, the the type of sessions that they have and one in particular that I did attend was how anti-racist is your district? And just hearing from uh, not uh, not Aleo, I, it was, wasn't it? No, it was the National Association for School Boards. Uh, okay, not Aleo, but it's similar, but because it's national. And so this one was school board members from all over the country. And then in this session, you could see the different diversity of groups of of school board members that that felt like they were struggling just to have the diversity, diversity, equity and inclusion type of programs within their school district. And just hearing what we're doing in our school district, we're ahead of the game. And not only are we ahead of the game, um, we, we're continuing to push because even in California, you would think that things would be easy and not necessarily so. So um, just the fact that, just to hear what other school districts are going through and what we're going, what we're doing, um, I'm just, again, really proud of the work that we're doing. Um, but I do have a question and this could be later on, uh, this could be answered later on. You know, what, what are we do, who took, I know we hired someone to take over the position that we we had previously. And maybe we can get a quick update of what what uh, what we're doing in that direction as well and within that department. Um, but um, yeah, I just want to say our district is ahead of the game and we've, I think we've always been. And we've always pushed to make sure, I know that there is going to be presentation with A through G career pathways and dual enrollment. And with the governor pushing now for dual enrollment, again, we're, we're ahead of the game there as well. So I'm really excited for the presentation when it comes and um, look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Ms. Grande?
I just want to start by saying, uh, I have heard our superintendent's speech on shine, I think twice now. And I can't tell you how, how happy and grateful I am to be in this position at this time. And he was especially, um, did especially good job in front of the community of the um, Democratic Luncheon Club. And I believe me, I've been in there when they really torn apart our district. And I understand it's their opinion and they are, you know, I'm not there to defend or anything. I will let time show, right? Uh, but I do, I do say, don't give up hope. There is always hope. We make hope happen, right? So when he got there, he didn't even know himself what he did. And I looked around that room and one by one, I saw people start to believe. I felt it. It was in the room, wasn't it? It was just, it was just great. People were laughing and and, you know, looking at each other in a different way. So I just want to acknowledge our superintendent's work and 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 just, just keep getting more and more proud of him. Um, I've been very busy learning uh, these last three months, which I love to do. Uh, thank you, Board, for sending me and I acknowledge you. Uh, I, last three months, I have Last three months, I have attended the CAVEA Conference, the California Charter School Conference, which is a big eye-opener, and the most recent National School Board, the NSBA, which is, we are the CSBA, so it was the one with the nationwide. So, that was also an eye-opener. And also, I just want to say, I think, one or two more little things. The Multicultural Book and Family Festival has returned to CSUSB, and it's going to be free books for all of the children in our city and anywhere else on May, Saturday, May 11th, from nine to three, activities, food and fun. Our guest speaker at noon was going to be Victor Villasenor, my favorite author. He has a new cover on his reign of gold. He'll be signing books, I'm sure. I have many of his books already. And you know who has a thirty-minute puppet show there for the kids? Yes, me. And so, that, I want to share that with you. And also, again, I just, I do want to say, you know, how I'm sorry for the family of Gil Navarro. He was much loved and revered by some, and others, maybe not so much, but no one can deny his impact on our community. No one. He has that. And a little known about him is that I happen to know this, because I was a student twenty years ago, and I ran with certain people that were very active. Manuela Sosa and Randy Sosa, they raised millions for the students to, that were undocumented, to attend colleges of their choice, but she promoted UCR. And Gil was with her every step of the way. She was at her home all the time. I was invited to. She didn't know I was a teacher. She didn't like teachers. But she, she, she had bad experiences when she was a child and was a Spanish speaker, so, but she, she still loved me even after she found out. But she, she had Gil at all of her fundraisers, and he always took all the kids with him that he had helped and their families. He had tables that were just, they were just, he had people who truly loved him. I saw that all the time. I was amazed. And he'd say, "Well, you gonna give me money for my campaign?" I said, "Yes, if you promise to buy a new shirt." And he said, "Well, I don't need one," because he was famous for his Hawaiian shirts, anyway. But anyways, I just want to say thank you, Board, once again, for taking care of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Sabios?
Same here. I want to just start off by expressing my deep condolences to Gil's family. And just want to kind of, you know, his passing, obviously, was a huge impact for me as well. As many of you know, Gil was my mentor. I'm actually on the school board because of him, and I'm a school psychologist because of him. And my son has been quite successful because of him as well. So, Gil is one of the, one of the only people, and maybe I don't meet a lot of people, that I truly, truly learned to respect. He was the kind of person who walked his talk, and he understood. You know, I met him, when I met him, he was, you know, older, older in his lifetime, so I don't know how he was when he was younger. But when I met him, he was just an exceptional, exceptional human being. And I remember him sharing with me, when I first reached out to him and met him, "You either love Gil or you hate him." And that was true, and I definitely, definitely learned to love him. He, he shared with what he had, so, you know, when he was on the waterboard, you know, you get stipend or his allowance that he would get from there. And he would spend half of, half of what he made giving back to the students that he served, you know, served in the families, you know, myself. He never charged me a dime to help me when he was assisting me with my son, because I was a single parent on welfare, and he understood that, so. And even after I had graduated from UCR, I spent six months trying to find a job, and he hired me. He was paying me seventeen dollars an hour while still helping me with my son. These are the kind of things that some people don't know about Gil, and the ones that do, we do. And so, again, just deep, deep condolences to his family. He will be tremendously missed by many, myself included. And, yeah. On a side note, I do want to also say, a great Pride Event. It was really nice for me to have been there this year. The last year, we weren't able to, because we had, we were out on a conference. But, but really, really amazing event. Glad to see so many people there in support, and really, like Ms. Medina said, it's just creating a space and a place for inclusion, right? Really teaching that no matter where, you know, where you come from, who you are, what your story is, you deserve respect, and you deserve to be included and accepted and respected. And so, this is just one, one aspect of our huge diverse community that we have in our district, and really just providing those spaces for everybody to feel welcome and included. It's really nice for me to have been there and have seen the students and student panel did absolutely amazing, sharing. And one of the things that I remember one of them saying is, "Don't put us in boxes. We're so much more than this," you know. We don't fit, and I resonate, it resonated with me, because especially when you're in that age, you're trying to discover who you are, and sometimes that's a huge endeavor. So, again, thank you for that. And then just really quickly, wanted to share, we were at the Coast to Coast out in DC Conference, where school board members in California and also administrators, district administrators across the state as well, you know, kind of came together to advocate about important topics in our state. And, you know, it was really nice to see fellow board members from Rialto and superintendent, you know, from Fontana, and just kind of come together and really advocate with, you know, Congress people regarding the topics that affect us. And one of the things was pushing for special education fully funded, right? Forty percent is what they had promised fifty years ago, and we are funded at about eight percent, nine percent, maybe ten if we're lucky. So, just kind of wanted to share that returning, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. President, excuse me. Madam Wyatt's president. While a lot being said about, you know, a couple champions for kids, and obviously, I got a little choked up there, so I had to excuse myself. But said a little bit about Mike, and as for Mr. Navarro, Gil, gosh, I go back about twenty years with him, and we often sat on the opposite side of the table, as he would be an advocate for students with disabilities, and I would be the administrator representing the county in probation. The interesting part about Gil is that I always admired him, though, for what he was doing, and probably ninety-nine percent of the time, he was right, and we were wrong. We had a lot of things we had to correct and fix, and over the years, and it didn't take long, we actually became friends. And anytime that Gil had a concern with his students, and whether it was the district I worked for or another district, he'd call me up, say, "Scott, what do you think?" And I'd be like, "Well, let's go have breakfast and talk about it," and he'd bring me files, and we'd review them. And I'd say, "Yeah, this looks like we need to take care of it." And so, a lot of that was able to be mediated without even having to file for due process or go through what we call now ADR, Alternative Speed Resolution. And so, I really respected him for that, because he could have made it a lot harder on the district and cost us a lot of money, but that was never his intent. His intent was to do what was right for kids and to create better systems of education for our students with disabilities. And he had a profound impact on local education for us with students with disabilities, so I absolutely admire, respect him. And I know even some of our conversations before he passed, he's still sharp as a tack. I'll be honest, I didn't know he was that old, so, you know, he had that big beard at the end. Gil looked really good. He was still full of energy and pep to advocate for kids. So, you know, I'm really thankful for him. And as for Mike, like I said earlier, he's the reason why I'm here. You know, one of the things I admired about him, made me want to do this, was his passion for CTE and career pathways and apprenticeships and internships. And so, he championed that, and that's something that I want to carry a torch for him as well on, and that we continue to do that, create just unbelievable advanced pathways for our kids when they leave our schools. Actually, they aren't ready for employment. Not that we're getting prepared, but they are ready, and I know we can do that, and we are doing that now. So, thank you to both of them. Finally getting back out there and doing events, I, you know, I obviously was on hiatus there and slowed things down, but, you know, I'm getting back out there. And I was talking to Mr. Ariano. It's busy time now. It's go time. It's like super busy for a lot of us. We can do something every night if we wanted to, every day, and some of us are. So, you know, I went to the Pacific Honor Advisory Meeting, and that was really nice. They're doing a great job there. And, you know, I thank Ms. Sergeant and Mr. Olson, Randy Olson and Kimber Sergeant. They were there presenting data to our Pacific Honor families, parents and students, so they could better understand and interpret it and understand when they see data, what does it mean? Because a lot of times, it's just numbers to folks, and so, they were able to do a really good presentation on that, and, you know, what we need to do to move the dial, so I appreciate that. I don't mix Alexander. Was I in the room? Did you talk about Soul Point? I'm sure you did. So, what an amazing experience for them to get inducted into California Hall of Fame, and they did a number of performances that were just over the top. And I'll be honest, they did better than the adults. I was like, wow, they did better than the adults. Yeah, so these kids are as good, if not better, than the folks that are being recognized for careers in music and industry. And they have a long career ahead of them, and they're already there. So, when we talk about the talent here in our city, again, it's unbelievable. It's world-class talent. So, that was a wonderful experience, and again, thank you to them for just doing an amazing job. Mr. Wing and Mr. Yamas and all our other music teachers, I've known them. I think me and Ms. Medina knew them. I was asked, "Medina, when we were little?" And we were little. Our kids were even littler, and my kids are in music programs, and I'm almost on time, but I'm getting a little long today. My daughter and my son both played cello and viola. And I remember when they started their first year, and they're in beginning orchestra, and I was like, "Okay, these kids are right." Went to winter recital. Then intermediate group came on. I said, "Oh, they're pretty good." And then the advanced group came on. I was like, "Oh, my gosh." And that's not what I said. I was blown away. I had tears in my eyes. I was like, "These kids are so dang good," and they're tiny. They're like twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old, advanced players. I mean, the best musicians I've seen in my entire life, and they're in middle school. So, you can only imagine how much better they are now. So, that was amazing. And last night, we had the VAPA Awards. That was cool, and again, great talent. Is it Keith Brockie, I believe is the name, is over from Row Valley? He does a heck of a job, and the kids are just amazing. And I even, I took a bunch of pictures, because some teachers, I know they're real proud about their artwork of the kids, and one was about Jayden Daniels. Their kids did a whole thing on Jayden Daniels. So, I walked around, there's Jayden Daniels' pictures everywhere. I was like, "This is all cool," because now he's something that they're looking up to as a role model. So, I took a bunch of pictures, and I sent them to his mom this morning. She said, "Gotta check this out." I said, "Our next generation, our future, is fired up because of your son. They're motivated." So, I just wanted in on the note, you know, he's already inspiring so many kids, so thank you.
Mr. Husky? Okay, so, you know, I want to thank Joe Navarro, our colleague from Harupa, for coming tonight. You know, we are blessed to have so many folks that are so passionate about our kids in our district, and Mike Gallo and Gil Navarro are but two. And so, my condolences go to their, their families. Really quick, draft's next week for Jayden. I can't wait to watch and see how that goes. I also want to do my congratulations on the Pride Event. Unfortunately, my bonus son's birthday was this weekend, and they had planned a birthday event, so I was not able to attend, and it breaks my heart, because that event is something I'm passionate about, and our kids are something that I'm passionate about. So, kudos to Swiss and to Ms. Medina and everyone, Mr. Ariano, for a great event. I'm really excited, because, you know, I really advocated for the dental pathway at Cajon, and they're finally starting to break ground. They're laying out for like the sewer and stuff, so I'm hoping that we're gonna do something. I know we've done things for other pathways, but I'm hoping that we're gonna have an opportunity to go up there, either to celebrate the opening. I guess we've sort of missed the groundbreaking itself, but I'm very excited about that. A while back, I was contacted, I have a Carrie Vitek Miller. I've known her forever. Her dad and my mom talked together. So, her dad was always called Vitek. It was Vitek and Chasky, so we're still Vitek and Chasky. And she reached out to me, because for the second year in a row, their science camp trip was canceled at the last minute. And, you know, she was just sort of like, she was just like disappointed, like, you know, and I'm like, "Well, let's see if we can do something. Like, we should be able to do something." And so, I sort of, I reached out and then had her get in contact with, and she emailed me today to tell me that categorical programs was amazing over spring break, especially Virginia-Vicki Vera. They worked really hard, and they've got a science camp set up for them from May eighth through the tenth. This was all done on vacation while people were, you know, doing whatever. So, she also wanted to give kudos to Kimber Sergeant and to her principal, Jennifer Barbara West, because they all worked really hard. But she, she said, "Thanks for the help and support, but I wanted to let you know that it all worked out because of categorical programs." And so, I wanted to give that shout-out to them, because they went over and beyond to make sure that our kids, you know, were able to attend their science camp. This is the season of events. It's been, it's, you know, the next few months is crazy, and it's so hard to get to everything. But I also went to NSBA. One item that I wanted to, because you guys have already, you know, talked about it a little bit, but I went to one sixteen-year-old student. Reminded me of our student board members from Portland Schools. They do the student summits every year with their high schools to get input, you know, sort of like their thought exchange, but in person. And I thought, what a great thing if we could somehow do that with our student leaders, maybe our board members or Slack, to try to, you know, do some kind of student summit to just sort of, they, they had a topic, and they do it once a year, just to get student voice and student agency, student engagement. So, I thought that was, that was probably my favorite of all of the things that I went to there. Coast to Coast, there was Allison Klein from EdWeek. She talked about AI. She really, it was funny, Danny, that you mentioned that earlier, or Mr. Tillman, because she really got me thinking a little differently about AI and about how it is, how it's, how entrenched it is in our system, how early we need to be talking about it. She talked about her four-year-old who wants to know about the person inside her speaker, you know, her smart speaker and stuff like that. And so, I was sort of thinking about, you know, how, we don't really have policy. We haven't really looked about how we're going to use AI. There are places that have rubrics that you have to cite your AI sources if you're using, you know, AI in your papers. And so, there are a lot of different resources and things that are out there that I think we need to think about and talk about. The other, St. Linda Lake did some polling information, which is, I thought was interesting. And then they had Francisco Negron at Coast to Coast. He talked about different legal cases, things in front of the Supreme Court. But one of the things he talked about was the Students for All, the SFA versus Harvard case. And that was the affirmative action case, and there's some real implications for K-12 that we might want to look at down the line about what that means for some of, could potentially mean from some of our programs that are really good, but could be impacted, you know, by, by this case as, as the Supreme Court continues to look at what they see as affirmative action or disparate treatment within race and ethnicity. The last thing I just wanted to do is a shout-out and an apology to Keith Brockie and to the VAPA. I, for the first time, you know, got a Tesla, and I've been gone for the last week and a half, and I didn't plug in my car. And so, I went to go get in the car yesterday, and it wouldn't go anywhere. So, I couldn't go to that, so I'm very disappointed. But Keith Brockie is doing the centerpieces for the Spring Awards for SBC-SBA, for the Spring Awards that we're having on the twenty-ninth. So, I will get to see some of the student artwork, and I'm really thankful to him, and I can't wait to see our student work for that, so.
Well, I know I'm gonna make Mrs. Alexander upset when I say this, but if you have, I have an electric car. But if you have an electric car, you have to have a gas car. You just can't live with just an electric car.
Here comes the rebuttal. Here comes the rebuttal.
You got to have a gas car, I'm just telling you.
I have to. I have. I like to get that.
Zoom around, and all of a sudden, it's down to nothing. I'm like, "Okay, I'll park it and get in the van."
To live in the land of death.
And I don't trust the automation and that. I would never do, let it drive me around, because I've worked in IT my whole life. It just takes Because I, because I, I've worked in IT my whole life. It just takes one bug. When, when you see, let me tell you something. When you see people pushing updates to you every night, that's what it does on Tesla. Every night they say, we're going to update. I know from a IT person, when you get updates, you don't know what you're getting in there. So they give you an update and a couple of cars crashed, then they're going to say, okay, we're going to roll it back and do a different version. I don't want to be part of the part that wrecks, but anyway, that's another story. I do, I do want to say the pride event, uh, in East Springs was great. Um, I agree the, the, just the, uh, aesthetics of it, the color, the beauty, which is wonderful. Uh, just the, uh, vibe was just amazing. And, uh, Mr. Ariano, the, the, the employees from the district, they did a super job. So I, I can't say enough good things about that. Mr. Tobias, I am old. I am old. I, and I've been around so long, I feel like a dinosaur. But, but Gil and I started in the old building. And I remember when there were people who, board members who disliked Gil vehemently. And, uh, and, and that was the majority of the board. And he would just, they would just get so intense about him at the dia speaking. And, um, I started as an activist in the audience with him and then I got elected. And, and just to, and to hear the discussions in closed session about how, uh, much they disliked him was just amazing to me. But the people on the board take it for granted now because we see it the way I saw it then. It's just if he's identifying issues and problems, it's our job to solve the problems and not get mad about it. If it really wasn't an issue, there was nothing to worry about. And if, uh, anything he brought to bear, whether it was contacting the Department of Justice, wherever, to me, that was another eye making sure that we were doing things properly. So, uh, we need to agendize at the next meeting to, and you guys can work on identifying a building that we want to name after Mr. Navarro, and if the consensus is there. And then for Mr. Gallo, uh, we just had a great time working together. The one thing that, um, Gil and Mike Gallo had in common till their last breath, they worked to help our community and our students. I never forget, it was, um, last year and I got a call from Mike and he was asking what was going on. It was during the appointment. He wanted to know who I was supporting and he wanted to give me his input. And I heard all this beep, beep, and this noise in the back. And I said, where are you at, Mike? In the airport? He said, no, I'm in the hospital. And I couldn't believe it. I was like, take care of yourself. But he didn't care about the tubes and all the machines around him. He still wanted to, um, help in the community and, and do what was best for our students. And, uh, Gil was the same way. Yeah, Gil was, you know, when Gil had a slight stroke, I believe he had. And I thought, okay, we ain't going to see Gil no more. Then he came in with the walker. And, uh, I saw him, I saw him at the restaurant with the walker at El Tapia, uh, with another new mentor, mentee that he was helping, um, and, you know, schooling him and. And we'll never know the, not a parent he helped, we'll never know the number of people he helped in politics. I remember sending people to him, saying, hey, you know, Gil will help you out. And I had a friend of mine went to him and, uh, he said Gil had all these files in his house. And he pulled up a chair and told him the whole robes and how to get elected. And, uh, he was just, uh, an amazing person and he's going to be missed. Uh, he touched so many people in the community, you know, those type of people. Uh, Gil, Gil is truly an unsung hero. And, um, we'll never know the good that he did for all the good that he did in our district. But I'm glad to be able to say that, um, uh, I was able to, um, experience him. Uh, it was times that Gil got mad at me and we were on the, politically, he was upset with me for whatever reason. But I, that had never bothered me because I knew in the end, that's just part of politics. And we were all on the same page because in the end, we all wanted to help as many people as possible. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Superintendent.
President Tillman. Well, first I want to start off by thanking, uh, Marlene and Michelle for a very robust, thorough presentation and just say how proud we all are. I know we agree how proud of the work that they've done and, um, trying to get it out to scale is going to be our next, uh, priority. But, uh, thank you, Board, for your kind words of, of the work they were doing. So I want to end the night, uh, like I usually do, with just, uh, sharing some shining moments of our district and of course paying honor, uh, to a couple of people that we've talked about today. So first I just want to share that, uh, San Bernardino High School's Engineering and Visual Media Pathway received, uh, Silver Certification. So congratulations to, uh, my alma mater, uh, at Berdoo. The next slide. Uh, as you know, um, Sierra was, uh, just recently, um, identified as a CDE Model Continuation School. Well, to add to that, Hector Murieta has just been identified as the 2024 California Continuation Education Association Plus Administrator of the Year. So congratulations to, uh, to Hector. Next slide. And Juanita Watkins, our principal at Lancashire. I was notified today that is part of the Island Empire Black Graduation Ceremony. Uh, Juanita is the recipient of this year's Dorothy Ingram Educator of the Year for the impact that she's had, uh, in the community with our African-American students. So congratulations to, uh, Juanita Watkins. And just recently, Tony Thurman in the California Department of Education, uh, identified our middle college, high school as a California Exemplary Dual Enrollment Award. So congratulations to Jameis Venosa and his staff. Next slide. And Curtis Middle School, this is a rarity. We have a middle school that has earned Gold Certification for their, um, STEM pathway. That's very rare for a middle school to get Gold Certification. So congratulations to, uh, Curtis Middle School. Next slide. And, uh, San Andreas High School, um, just won, uh, exemplary program for the Business of Science and Technology Career Academy Program on their campus. So congratulations to the staff there. Next slide. And then as you know, we've been paying tribute to, uh, both Gil Navarro, Michael Gal. So I, I want to extend our sincerest condolences to both families. And, uh, we have a lot of sadness, but I want to talk about the great stuff, uh, about these gentlemen. So Gil Navarro, I've known Gil probably for twenty-five years when I first became an elementary principal here. And he was always very supportive of me, mentored me, counseled me, uh, every time. He chew on me a little bit, right? Uh, but he was always very supportive of me while I was Superintendent Redlands and Superintendent here. So he's going to be, uh, greatly missed. And like, as we all know, he was a staunch advocate for kids. So, uh, I remember he and my dad and a bunch of other old dudes used to get together and, uh, they would sit there and they'd debate socialism, fascism, democracy. And it was just amazing, you know, and they would ask me, what do you think? And I'd say, I'm not even listening. I'm eating, you know, but, uh, fascinating guy. Uh, he will be sorely missed. So I thank the Board for, uh, making the, the move to name something after him. Because as you said, President Tillman, we will never know the true impact, uh, uh, and the number of people that he's touched. Uh, but it was always for all the right reasons and some people misinterpreted that, but it was always for the right reasons. And next slide, Mike Gallo. I didn't get a chance to know Mike well. I knew who he was. But I can tell you, um, when he was, you know, CEO of Kelly Space and Technology, he was the one, he's the one that pioneered CD, not just here in our school district, but across California. He was that guy that started that conversation, uh, across state. And we were just lucky that he was here in San Bernardino, part of the Board. And all of you that were on the Board with him, you supported the vision that he had. And we're better for it because we have some stellar gold and silver, uh, metal, uh, programs. So, uh, Mike will be, uh, sorely missed, uh, but his impact will live on as well, uh, Mr. Navarro's. Next slide. And we recently, we're talking about another hero here in town, Graciano Gomez. We just celebrated the ten-year anniversary of the naming of his school. So we had the opportunity to be there at that moment and hear, uh, uh, many stories about Graciano. But Graciano, as you know, he and his family owned the Island Empire Hispanic News. And he was instrumental in putting together the Simfonia Mexicana here in San Bernardino. And, uh, what I admire about Graciano being a young kid is back in the day, he created this, uh, newspaper, uh, because he was disgusted at how Latinos were portrayed in, in the news and on TV. And this was his effort to elevate, uh, Latinos and, and our impact in the community. So, uh, there, there was a lot of love that day for Graciano Gomez. So I appreciated that. Next slide. Here is a picture.
Oh, Graciano was a school board member.
Yeah. Oh, yes. And he was the first Latino, uh, school board member here and, and, uh, thank you, President Tillman. That's correct. The next slide here, you see, uh, the folks who were, um, uh, recognized at the Mosaic Legacy Event. And Dr. Judy White sends her hellos to everyone here. But you see Danya Brown, one of our teachers at Del Valle Middle School, and two students from middle college, high school, and one from San Bernardino High School were recognized for their academic achievement and for their impact, uh, in the community as young people and what they want to do, uh, to come back in the community. So it was a wonderful event at the Air Museum and Dr. Wyatt looked fabulous. Uh, she was a little self-conscious about her white hair, but I thought it looked fabulous. Don't you think? Uh, who was there? Was that, uh, oh, it was Marcus. Her, her hair looked wonderful, right? Uh, Wyatt, it was, it was great. It was great. So it was nice to be recognized. Next slide. And congratulations to San Bernardino High School and Marshall Elementary. Uh, both of them won first place in the San Diego Sea Perch Regional Competition. Now, Marshall, because they don't have an elementary level, competed at the middle school level and still won first place. So both, uh, both teams will be, uh, going to Maryland, uh, on May thirty-first for the National Sea Perch Challenge at the University of Maryland. So we wish them luck, but how exciting, you know, to have our schools represented.
What is Sea Perch?
Underwater Robotics Program. So you already see stamina action here going on in the district. So congratulations to both of them. And then next slide, I do want to echo that, uh, the Pride Day event was wonderful. We don't need to repeat everything, but what I'm so proud of is just our focus on inclusive excellence and that one of our core values is creating a sense of belonging. And that was a great moment of creating that sense of belonging. So thank you to Colleen and everyone who was involved in putting together, uh, our second annual, uh, pride event. It was a, it was a great, great moment to be a part of. And last slide, I know it's been mentioned, is, uh, a big kudos to Soul, uh, Soul Point, uh, in their induction into the California Music Hall of Fame. I gotta tell you, I, we were sitting next to people that were not from our area. And when they played their set on Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, then the Medley of Cool and the Gang, then the Medley of Chicago, then Tina Marie Square Biz and so on and so on. Uh, the crowd was just incredible. They couldn't believe that these were high school students. So, uh, to, to Brian Wing, Peter Lamas, Reverend, uh, Bronika Martindale, congratulations into the students for representing San Bernardino so well and being inducted into the Hall of Fame. So, uh, it's a great day in San Bernardino Unified School District. Lot to be proud of. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ariano. Uh, section thirteen, summary of board members' requests, thirteen point one, review request.
Good evening. There are two requests for tonight. The first one is from Ms. Rosales Medina. Um, you asked for a quick update on the position, but we just wanted clarification on which position.
Is this the diversity, equity, inclusion? Is that what you're referring to?
Equity. And then the second request is from Mr. Till, um, President Tillman, is to agendize at the next board meeting to name a building after Mr. Gil Navarro. And that's all our requests for tonight.
Fourteen point one. I'm gonna ask for a mem-, my moment of silence in, um, memory of Michael J. Gallo, Phyllis Hammond and Gil Navarro. Thank you. And, uh, entertain a, uh.
Second.
They moved to second to adjourn. Be in adjourn.